...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just want to, for the record, make a note that we do have John Jones on the phone to participate as best as he can. He was unable to make it in person. Okay? Uh, next, next up on the agenda, we have comments from the audience regarding agenda items. Would anyone care, we would ask that you limit your comments to five minutes, and we ask that you state your name and address for the board. Would anyone care to address the board on items on our agenda? And we have a lot.
Yeah?
Come on up and speak. Thank you.
Name's Nick Bell. Address 12154 Northridge Trail House Corners, Wisconsin, 53130. Graduated last year from Whitno. I was the star diver that we had, the only diver. Here to talk to you guys about the design of the pool. I think I seriously need to consider what you're doing, eight lanes versus six lanes. Um, I don't know when you guys finally do decide on that, on the final design, but if you guys do do eight lanes, it's going to be, in my opinion, a mistake. You're not gaining anything. Big meets are limited in entry, so you're not going to have that many heats of everything. You need to have four heats to make it worth it. You're going to be losing space during practice because of the dive team. And it's going to be easier because you have the existing shell there, so I think that six lanes overall is a better idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Would anyone else like to address the board on items on our agenda? Anyone else like to? If not, it is a committee of the whole meeting, so we will entertain, uh, if you really have a strong feeling about something, right, during our discussion, we can, we can continue to involve you. This is, these are big, big decisions we're making tonight. So, uh, next we'll move to committee reports. And let's see, we'll, can you start down here? Personnel?
None.
None? Okay. Policy?
Yes, uh, we did meet last week, and there is a, uh, it's a really good opportunity for Whitno and for the whole state, actually. Uh, the Wisconsin Technical Excellence Scholarship, and we'll be reading the policy the first time. It is a $2,500, three-year, $25 each year for three years, up to three years, is to promote, um, technical learning. And, uh, um, as you have read or read, um, this, it's getting started really quick, and so DPI has stated that the policy doesn't have to be perfect. Get a policy that you're comfortable with for the first year, let people know that this may change next year. Let the process happen. Uh, we've got some time dates that we have to meet, and, uh, and then next year, you can tweak it the way you want it. And, uh, Joel Green did a really nice job, he's not here, but he did a really nice job of, uh, getting a policy that is pretty close to, uh, uh, good to go. So, that's what we got.
Thank you. And Stephanie?
Well, I'm kind of the reason why the agenda is the length that it is. Um, so most of our finance work will be seen later in the evening, but one of the things that isn't, isn't evident tonight is the work that Eric Graham's been doing on our technology group, and also the fi, the plan that we need to, uh, file with the state for technology going forward. So, some of the things that'll be coming up before the committee and the board in future dates is, uh, the sale of old equipment, uh, return on investment that we might see on some of the things that we have as that ages out, uh, and then other technology needs that we've uncovered in the district, and that will all be coming forward later dates throughout the year. Okay? Thank you.
Uh, next up, we will have our old business presentation discussion of capital improvement projects, updated programs, and tonight we hope to define the scope. I'm sorry, did I do something?
Item B.
Superintendent's report. Oh!
She was real excited about the superintendent's report coming through.
Thank you. Thank you.
As promised, I'm keeping it short because we have so many things to talk about, but some of the highlights, we are continuing to get excellent press coverage from, uh, the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. I was really excited a couple weeks ago to open up the Sunday paper and see a column by Jim Stingle for the high school transition students, um, and it was on page 3A, so it was really good coverage, it was a big article. Um, and the reason I want to highlight it, our faculty and staff come up with a lot of great initiatives that often go unnoticed. It's great for the kids, and they don't do it to be noticed, but it's nice when they get the notice. And, um, so it was really positive for Scott Schubert, his aides, and his students to get that kind of coverage. And, um, Dave tells me that the circulation for our Sunday Journal Sentinel is around 320,000, so that's, uh, 320,000 people if they read the whole paper, other than looking at the ads. Um, saw some pretty positive stuff about our district. Smooth start to the second half of the school year. Uh, special thanks to all of our teachers and support staff for making the second half on such a positive note. Everybody thinks of the, after the Christmas break, it's the second half, we still have a couple more weeks till the semester, but, uh, um, it really, it, with that big break, it's always nice to see people come back excited. And then last but not least, weather-related closings. Calling off school can be one of those controversial decisions that bring out supporters, and those are opposed, and like I told the board, that's okay because this is America, you get to, to say what you think. Um, when we make a decision to close school, it's at first and foremost based on the safety of our students. I get reports from the bus company and our principals that buses are running up to 30 minutes late on parts of the routes. That means that we sometimes have little kids standing there waiting 20 to 30 minutes, um, for an extended period of time. Usually it's maybe five minutes. Uh, but when it's 20 to 30 below, buses are running slower because of the ice and that salt doesn't work on the ice, so, um, that's a big part of it. The principals also report on their absentee on the day before, and, um, the district that called off when we did the second day had over a 60% absentee rate. We just had a couple hundred extra on, uh, the previous day. And then, um, oh, and when MPS closes, that, well, that doesn't drive our decision, they also do some of our busing of our kids, and so, I mean, that is part of an issue as well. So, um, always, you know, we're going to err on the side of student safety, and, um, when we do have school, and if you disagree with that, we always put something out to our parents that says they still retain the right, as long as they follow the procedures to keep their kids home if they feel it's not safe to travel. So that's it on weather-related closings, and now we can talk about some fun and exciting things under old business.
Is there anything else I forgot before we move on? Okay. Under old business, back to the presentation discussion of capital improvement projects, updated programs, defining the scope, budget, and tax impact. And we have several guests here that are maybe part of the process, and rather than try to tax my brain and memory, would you maybe introduce yourselves and how you're related here that Kit, we'll start with you.
Sure.
She'll be maybe helping us along here.
Sure. My name's Kit Daly, and I work for Epstein U.N. Architects.
And we have Lisa.
And I'm Lisa Voison, I work for Robert W. Baird, we're the financial consultant for the district.
All right. Go ahead. Second row.
Mark Lewandowski, I work for Epstein U.N. Architects.
Ryan Riden Schneider, I work for J.P. Cullinan Sons.
Shannon Mettoxen, I work for J.P. Cullinan Sons.
Kevin Hickman with J.P. Cullinan Sons.
Daniel Cull, J.P. Cullinan Sons.
All right. That's our team that's been helping us work through a lot of our, um, facility issues as of late. So, thank you all. Uh, we will start with, we do have a PowerPoint that I believe Shannon's going to run, is that correct?
Ryan's going to come help me because I don't want to screw it up.
Shannon and Ryan. While, uh, and Eric will help us too. So our goal for tonight, the board has been looking at several, several issues, facility needs, and every time we've had a discussion, we've said, let's keep moving forward with all of these needs. But now it's time to decide for tonight, what can we support right now and at what cost of all the projects that we've been looking at. While we're making a decision here tonight, it really isn't our decision, it is ultimately the community's decision as to how we move forward with some of these projects. We're intending to use the referendum process in April to, to help us work collaboratively with our community and with our staff and our parents to figure out the best approach to improving some of our facilities in our district. So that's the question on the table tonight, and our goal, I've talked with my colleagues, our goal is to, uh, the, the way to have the best success in working with our community is to pull the board together first. And we do have, we've had lots of debate, we have a lot of different views on what we think is the highest priority in this district. So, you know, we'll continue to all make su, I'll make sure, everybody has a chance to say what's important to them, and, um, we also will, like I said, allow our audience to maybe give us some feedback if they're seeing something we're not thinking about. And, and I'll try to really listen to and try to figure out where do we have complete agreement, and those are things we know we should move forward on, and, at this time. But I will, I do want to mention that all along this board has thought that everything on our list of these four projects are important, and they all need to be done. So all we're trying to figure out is what, what order and when, what's the highest priority, and how do we make them happen? Um, and we've had lots of midi, meetings, we've had, um, committee meetings, we've had some administrative meetings, we've, you know, involved as many people as we can to this point, we still need to involve more. And of course, we've hired some experts to help us figure out numbers. We surveyed our community, which gave us a great base of information, and we use that survey results, we've been using those results a lot to help us, uh, make the decisions to get us to this point. And we'll continue to look at those survey results. Um, the issues that are really driving these changes have to do with, um, safety and energy needs, we still have some Americans with Disabilities Act concerns in some of our buildings, and certainly we're always looking at the learning environment. Those are the issues that have been driving a lot of these changes, and, and you know, some people ask me, why are we doing this? Why do we have to address these issues now? And how do they affect the core academics of our district? Uh, and those are great questions. The thing that, that I help my friends and neighbors to understand is that things like school shootings have come up, and we have to look at our facilities different now. We have to look at them in terms of safety. Are our buildings safe? And that's one of the things that we're struggling with in terms of Hales Corners. Um, so, so these are not new issues, many of these issues have been on the table a long time, the pool, I know, uh, we've been trying to resolve those in this district, so hopefully we will continue to move forward with what we think is the best plan. So that's what tonight's all about, we're looking at, again, safety needs, energy needs, because we have some energy efficiency issues, there's more modern, um, technology out there around energy, and we also have, still have those Americans with Disabilities Act needs and learning needs. Back to the question of core academics, when people ask me, why are we doing this? And how does it affect core academics? Core academics are meant to be funded out of our operating budget, that is how we fund our schools. There are caps on the operating budget. When it comes to these large capital needs, we have the referendum process that helps us address these large capital needs, and we pay with those with long-term bonds, which we will learn more about tonight. But that's, so how does this affect our core academics? When we fund those building needs out of long-term bonds with the support of our community, it allows us to continue to focus our operating budget on core academic needs, and even at that, we're always challenged to find enough, enough to keep chang, you know, keep up with the changes in our society in terms of the type of programs, the type of technology, the things that we need in our classrooms and for our teachers. So, I just wanted to mention those couple of things before we jump into this process tonight as to a little bit of history, why are we doing this, and how does it impact our, our core academics? So the last thing I want to mention is that I know this board, we're going to put our best foot forward. Um, if, if it fails, it's not the end of the world. We, we are going to continue to, whatever we decide tonight, we're going to put our best foot out there, and I know we will. And we can't be afraid totally of failure because we, we just might not have the best plan. We think we will, or we won't vote on it, and I know we, we will. But it also is not the end of the world, and we will continue to work with our community to solve these issues. So that's what tonight's all about. Our first stop is to decide, what are we going to put on the April referendum, and that decision has to be made by next week. So tonight, we're going to define the scope on these projects. All right? With that, I'm going to turn it back over. We're going to go over a brief overview here because we've looked at this in-depth, and then we'll come back and we'll analyze each project one at a time, we'll look at the pros and cons, and we'll say yes, no, what's in, what's not. Does that, does anyone have any questions about this process? I didn't miss anything? All right. Okay. Take it over.
As Luanne said, we're just going to go over an overview here. We have, uh, option one, which includes the new Hales Corner Elementary School and the pool, and option two, the new Hales Corner Elementary School and, and the pool and energy put together, so just.
You know what? We actually have a ton of options. Those are not the only two. I just wanted to mention that the committee really recommended just the new HCE pool, and as we were preparing for tonight, we just thought it's possible because of some comments made at the last meeting about a higher vision for the high school. Well, what if we did approach it that way? And if we did, what did we hear from this board that the board might support to put on a possible referendum question that still is only two questions because that's what we recommended, and might get us a little bit more done in terms of the energy at the high school? So that's where option two came from, it came from sitting down with our experts here, and they, they've listened to what we want as well. But really, we have all four items on the table, we still can do whatever we want, but at the moment, this is how we've sort of narrowed our scope. Go ahead.
We're showing here just a, a site plan of the new Hales Corner Elementary School, we're just showing the building to the north, uh, sorry, actually, to the south and the fields to the north, and we'll just walk through kind of where we came from and how we got to where we are here today. The estimated cost, I know it's a little tough to see here, but, uh, based on our, our meeting with the Finance Specialties Committee meeting, we came up with the cost based on what we felt, uh, that the needs were going to be at that point in time, and that's based on, uh, ninety, uh, ninety-nine thousand. Ninety-nine thousand, one hundred square feet. Up here, what we're showing is any owner expenses, we have the design fees and, and fixed expenses that will be needed from the design side, and then we have the construction cost totaling twenty-two million, five hundred thousand dollars. Total budgeted cost, total referendum cost is twenty-one-eight, we'll talk a little bit about how we got to that twenty-one-eight difference. That's how we got to, uh, to the twenty-one-eight, and we have a district contribution of seven-hundred-thousand dollars, referendum cost would be twenty-one thou, twenty-one million, eight hundred thousand, and that total budget cost being twenty-two million, five hundred thousand. The survey range that was mentioned that went out was nineteen to twenty-one million dollars that went out. Lisa has a lot more detailed information here, but we just wanted to show, based on twenty-one million, eight hundred thousand, the tax mill rate impact would be a dollar thirty-seven, um, per thousand, and she'll talk a little bit more detail about that, but again, we just wanted to show that slide here. The Hales Corner Elementary pros and cons.
You can skip that for now, we'll come back to that. When we get to board discussion, we'll come back to that. Just keep going through all the.
We have the pool. Again, some reference of the pool that we looked at doing and what our budget is based upon. Again, similar, uh, project cost summary for the pool by itself. We have the owner's cost, the design fees, and construction costs for a total of four million, five hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. Referendum cost would be four million, six hundred thousand dollars. The survey range for the pool and the weight room together were five to seven million dollars. Pool tax impact based on four million, six hundred thousand would be twenty-nine cents per thousand. And again, Lisa will talk a little bit more on that for presentation. Weight room, now just a quick floor plan of the, uh, two thousand, two hundred seventy-five square feet, shown here. Again, our project cost summary, um, with all the owner expenses, design fees, that weight room would be nine hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred twenty-three dollars. Referendum cost would be, we just rounded up to a million dollars. Again, that survey range for the pool and the weight room was five to seven million. We have energy costs, here we just showed some, uh, there was a big laundry list of items that we were tasked to go put budgets to. Um, here are some of the main ones that came up, one being air conditioning at the high school gym. The other one to note is replace deteriorating exterior curtain walls as needed, um, for the high school, and not including the nineteen ninety-nine addition. And then we have estimated costs, low to high range, again, uh, the ones to note there, the air conditioning, the high range being three hundred forty-seven thousand, um, and for replacement of the deteriorating exterior curtain wall, uh, the shy of two million, one, one point nine million dollars. So the referendum cost for the energy, energy, we talked about what is two point three million. The survey range was two and a half to three point five million dollars. Energy tax impact on two point three million would be twelve cents per thousand. So based on the two options we talked about, understanding you have a lot of options to choose, some option one, new sale, new Hales Corners Elementary, uh, question one would be for the twenty-one million, eight hundred thousand, question two for the pool by itself would be four point six million. Option two, again, the twenty-one point eight, and then pool and energy together would be six point nine million dollars if we combined the pool and, uh, two of the energy options that we discussed.
Okay, so, uh, going back then, Elise, do you want to give us your tax impact?
Sure, I can.
Here first, and did we have a PowerPoint as well?
I knew.
Okay.
I have a PowerPoint, and I have, I only have nine copies of the PowerPoint, and you're nine sitting here, so. Sometimes it's nice to see it on, in front of you, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, my name is Lisa Voison from Robert W. Baird. The last time I was here was the summer, so I've been in front of most of you. We were talking about school finance 101. I actually pulled one of the slides from that presentation because I think it's really important when we start talking about financing a facility project, and how do we do that? And how do you get the authority and those types of things? So that's a very good slide here, which is really talking about total tax levy for the school district. So this is important because you will get asked as board members, how are we paying for this, and how can we afford this with revenue limits? What I wanted to explain to you is there's really three components to a tax levy, and this is your fourteen, fifteen, so just, uh, the taxes that came on the December tax bill, uh, shown up here. So your total tax levy was sixteen point four million, and it's broken up into three parts. One is the revenue limit, that's the biggest levy that you have, um, and that's, uh, you can pay debt out of that, uh, with those revenue limit dollars, and you do, you have that qualified school construction bond that you're paying a debt payment from that, that zero percent interest loan we got, uh, back a couple of years ago. And also, when we issued the debt for the stadium project, that was the, the authority we had, we were issuing it through the revenue limit, we did not go to referendum. That's the second component of the tax levy, your referendum debt levy. You have zero right now, you do not have any referendum debt. A district your size, it's commendable because most districts your size do have some, uh, form of debt out there for, to maintain their facilities, and that's what we're really talking about tonight, is this second component of the tax levy, which is the referendum debt payment.
And other than the five hundred thousand dollars, zero percent interest loan, we don't have any, right?
No debt.
Right.
You're in great shape from a debt standpoint, most districts, almost all districts in the state have some form of debt, especially your size. Um, because the stadium project, as you know, we, we obtained the authority to borrow, just like the QSCB, through the revenue limit, uh, and then we ended up having, uh, we were able to actually pay that off, and it was a great story. Uh, and so, so again, we're talking about the referendum debt levy, and there's also a small community service levy, um, that the district pays. So keep in mind, it's separate from the tax levy that's limited by the state. That's the, the one point I want to make here, is a separate tax levy for a debt payment. A lot of questions come up too on mill rate, how do you calculate mill rate? What is mill rate? Uh, and it's simply, the previous slide where I showed that total levy, the total taxes that you levy, you take that and divide it by the property value in the district to come up with your mill rate. So the school district of Whitno, total tax levy of sixteen point four million, that's what you're asking the entire community for, divide that by the property value in the community, and you come up with a mill rate per thousand of ten dollars and forty-seven cents, or one thousand forty-seven dollars on a hundred thousand dollar home. So that's what you'd see on your tax bill. If you had a hundred thousand dollar home, your school portion would be that ten, ten dollars, or one thousand forty-seven dollars. And that's what we're talking about when we say impact, the increase will be on top of that ten dollars and forty-seven cents for that debt payment. Just to give you an idea of where you are, because this is important to know where you are and your, with your peers, um, I was kind of laughing when I was looking at this, my, when one of my analysts put this together, she put Milwaukee in there, I don't, I don't consider them, I kind of consider them out on an island on their, on their own, but you know, you're, you're below the group average, um, just at pretty much a state, state average, that yellow line, ten dollars and forty-seven cents, but you're in the lower quadrant of, of your peers. And I think that's good to know, and then to kind of think about, well, when we're adding a tax impact of a dollar thirty-seven, you know, where, where do we fall at that point? And you're still, uh, well below those top ones, Franklin, South Milwaukee, Greendale, Greenfield. Oak Creek Franklin just approved a referendum in November, the tax impact, just so you know, uh, on the fifty-nine million was seventy-seven cents. And I believe Franklin was a couple of years back, and I don't have the tax impact for Franklin, but not many of the districts around here have gone to referendum. Kettle Marine has for, and they were somewhere in that forty cent range for about the same amount of, just giving you an idea where you, how you fit in to your peers. Any questions on that? Again, this is for the fourteen, fifteen mill rate for your peers. A little bit out of interest rates, and I'm sure you all know this, I love this chart because this chart shows where interest rates have come, um, in the last thirty years and how they've just dropped. We're actually almost to the all-time low in recorded history. We hit it in the fall, right at the end of the year, in just, in 2012, we hit the all-time low, and now we're kind of headed down in, in that direction again, and almost very close to the all-time low. So we're in a great place as far as interest rates, and I'll talk a little bit about that when I show you what the tax impacts are. So what you're looking at here is, is an index, and the top line is twenty-year borrowing, middle line is a ten-year borrowing, and the bottom line is a five-year borrowing. Your interest rate obviously is going to be lower if you amortize your debt in a shorter period of time. So again, the idea is that we are at the lowest interest rates pretty much in recorded history, it's a great time to borrow, and we'll talk about specifically what that means when I talk about this slide. So I've broken this slide up into, uh, five sections essentially. Uh, what I did is I just took twenty-one point eight million, amortized it over the statutory limit of twenty years, you can't borrow, a loan cannot go beyond twenty years. There's a chance that we may break that up and do a borrowing over a series of time, uh, maybe two separate borrowings, one year, and then the following year, depending on when you need the money. So there's lots of variations that go into this. This is just saying twenty-one million, borrowed all at once, amortized over twenty years, uh, at a very, very, um, good interest rate, I'll say that. I'm not going to say conservative because I tried to sharpen my pencil, and the interest rate I used was a three and a half percent. This morning, we sold bonds for a Maple School District, which is way up in the north part of the state, I mean, I think it's the very north, northern part of the state, uh, and they were, their bond rating was a little bit lower than yours, and we'll talk about that in a minute, but, uh, their interest rate was right in the low three percent range, so right around that three percent, maybe a touch under. Um, so I've got about a fifty basis point cushion on that interest rate, so I'm using three and a half percent. Interest rates can move fifty basis points in a week, or two weeks, or three weeks, um, so there's lots of volatility in the market, um, so know that, I, I'm right on the market. If you wanted to, um, be more conservative, there's a note down there under the assumption that says each half percentage point adds about seven cents to the mill rate. So in April, if we, if we issue bonds and the interest rate's four percent, and that's where the market is, it'll be a dollar thirty-seven, but it'll be seven cents more than that, which is a dollar forty-four. Okay, so that, does that make sense on the interest rate? Um, again, twenty-year borrowing, and we, we looked at the impact of where you are in the aid formula, so we've taken that into consideration as well. I don't know if you remember our talk from the summer, but you're in negative tertiary aid, and you can only lose up to a certain point.
Right. So.
And we have that factored in.
You have a losing aid would be for next year, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, right?
That's the max you could lose.
Max, right? Fifteen percent.
Yeah.
That isn't calculated in any of this stuff?
Yeah, it is.
It is? Okay.
Yeah. Because if you have a new debt payment, if you have a principal and interest payment, you have to submit that to the state as a shared cost, as a cost to be aided on. So you're going to be negatively aided on that payment, so we factor that in. We definitely factor that in. But we wouldn't let, allow you to lose more than eight hundred and seventy-six because that's, right now with the aid formula, as much as you could lose.
But we will see less money come from the state? Eight hundred and seventy, good, depending, right?
And I factor that into the dollar thirty-seven, so it's not going to be a surprise that way.
Okay.
Yep. Good, that's a very important point, and for, and it's tough to understand, but it's, Good, that's a very important point, and it's tough to understand, but it's, it's something that we definitely have to consider. So, again, first, 21.8 million's a $1.37 impact, very easy to translate that to a $100,000 home, just move the decimal over two, so it's a $137 increase over this year's tax bill. After that, it'll be flat, so it's not going to increase again the following year. So, it'll go up 137, and it'll stay that, stay there, double that if you have a $200,000 home. And then, you can just kind of see along the way, question two is 4.6 million, that's about a 30 cent, 29 cent increase, or $29 on a $100,000 home, double that if you have a $200,000 home. Now, if both questions pass, if you decide to go for one and two, just add those two tax impacts together. If two passes and one doesn't, there's not, there's going to be, there might be a little bit of an adjustment there on the tax impact, but I like to say that this is worst-case Any questions on the tax impact, what it means, interest rates?
Can you cover what your note in red talks about, Lisa?
Oh, yeah, each additional, oh, so what I did was, we, it's just an easy extrapolation, so you take kind of, if you add a half a million dollars, so say you're 21.8 million, you want to add a half a million dollars, because your cost is a half a million dollars more, then it's about 3 cents on the mill rate, so you can go, either way, you could subtract a half million and subtract 3 cents. So, if something changes tonight in the borrowing amount, or the loan amount, we can easily calculate what the difference tax impacts will be. And I'll be here to help you with that.
So, $3 for every $100,000?
Yeah, yeah, 3 cents on the mill rate, yep. Last slide, I always like to include this slide, because I think it's so important for a board member to understand that this is what the ballot question will look like. It's drafted by a bond attorney, and there's, there's really three components to the ballot question that's important. First of all, they are voting whether or not the school district can borrow general obligation bonds, and that just means debt that is, that you have the ability to tax for, that's what general obligation bonds. It would be, you'll definitely go through the bond market, the municipal market, because the interest rates are so low versus like going to a local bank or something like that. But, we'll explore all options. An amount not to exceed, that's important, because it's a not to exceed, it's 21.8 million, you cannot borrow more than 21.8 million. If you borrow 21.8 million, and your projects come in at 21 million, that 800,000 can go two places. One, it could pay for anything that fits under the umbrella of that purpose language up there that we'll talk about in a minute, or two, you can use it to offset your taxes, your tax levy. So, those are two options, probably my phone, huh? Sorry.
It's on the board, I think.
I thought I had it in silent, I guess.
Sorry, so try and find it.
That's all right, it's in my purse.
Okay.
Okay, I'm almost done, anyway. So, not to exceed 21, so that's, that's clear, because you'll get asked that question. What happens if projects come over not, over the 21.8 million, and I've had that happen? You're out of luck, you got to find it somewhere else, because you can't borrow, you can only borrow the 21.8 million. Last, most importantly, and we'll be, you, I know we've all worked on this, and we'll work on it with the bond attorneys, is what does the purpose language say? Make sure you're comfortable with that as a board. Because I've been in situations where we've come up, three years later, we have $800,000 left, and we want to put in a parking lot, but it's not under the umbrella of the purpose language, so we couldn't do it. So, be broad enough, but specific enough. I was on the board in Mesquite, and when we went to referendum for the elementary school, yeah, back in the day, not recent, you know, we actually had the place, the, we had the actual address, maybe not the actual address, but exactly where that elementary school was going to go, in the purpose language, the board wanted to be that specific. Now, think about how, how comfortable you are with something that specific, but, and I know you guys have worked on it, so maybe this is after the fact, but it's important to know that, you know, down the road, if you have excess funds, it's got to fit under that purpose language. I think that covers it all. Any questions? I'll be here, so we can.
Maybe I was distracted by the phone. If, can you also pay back the bonds, is that what you said?
Yep.
Okay.
You can pay back the bonds early, or you could offset your tax levy for your debt payment. So, if your debt pains, payment is a million dollars, you can take the 800,000 and bring it down to 200,000, and you can do that as well. And we would talk about what makes the most sense.
Okay. All right, any questions? That's the financial picture.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So, let's go back then and look at each project, and give it one more, make sure we're comfortable, and maybe someone could run that back for me to Hills Corners. Ah, Eric's got it. Go back down. And if you could go to the spreadsheet, I want to back up for just a second at the spreadsheet, elaborate on this just a little bit more. The first number was a number based on.
Leadership costs, right?
On looking at a different school, correct? The second number is what we thought we needed, right here in Hills Corners.
Yeah, the first number was based on 105,000 square feet, and it was based on, some we had, based on some.
Comparables.
Some requirements, yep, so we kind of went through that, came up with the square footage, and worked with Epstein U and all that, and your staff, and then.
And the amount was how much?
105,000.
And how much?
23.6.
Okay. And then, then.
Option two, we met one day and kind of really started cutting some square footage, and some things that maybe we didn't, at that point in time, think we needed, so we said, let's start cutting some, some options, so we got to a, a new square footage, and I'm struggling seeing that square footage.
96,100.
96,100 square feet. And then, we met again with the Finance Facilities Committee, and kind of walked through some of the things that maybe we shouldn't have cut out of that first one, said, Lowell, let's get this back in there, so that's how we got to the 99,100 square feet.
All right, so, is everyone still comfortable with moving forward with this particular Hills Corners project at that price? And I'd really like to go around and give everyone a chance to really hear your views again, on how you feel about that, we've had time to think about it. What do you think? What are your thoughts? Who wants to lead us out on that discussion?
We need a new elementary school.
All right.
It's as simple as that. And this is one of the most effective ways to get a safe learning environment, an effective learning environment for the community, and still maintain that community feel. That's, that's important. I would like it to be as cost-effective as possible, but I think this plan would get the job done for what we need, and the kids are certainly worth it.
You can go to that, like, pros and cons first, too, a little bit. We would be, here were some reasons that, that we have discussed, as terms of what we thought were the pros of moving this one forward. Interest rates are down, as was mentioned. This plan that we're looking at addresses all four of these areas, safety, Americans with Disabilities Act, the energy upgrades that the current school needs would be in here, and the learning environment needs, some of those classroom sizes, the rooms are too small, there's some real storage needs, and just a lot of needs in that way, so those are met. The facility can be designed, designed for community use, to use more easily, because we're doing a new school, so it really does benefit the community in ways that I hadn't even thought of. The district has no debt right now, and there was support for this option to do a new Hills Corners on that site in the survey. Some of the cons, of course, it's going to increase taxes, and every one of these will do that, and they're, you know, it's hard to replace that old building, because some of that is still usable, and we, we struggled with that, and there may be more, so feel free to chime in here, but if not, you know, we're comfortable, then you can go back to that other slide. If you're still comfortable, we would be able to move forward with that, you know, the 700,000, go back. The district contribution would be 700,000, referendum cost would still stick with 21.8, which was in the survey, but the total project cost, 22.5 million.
Okay, I'd like to comment on this part.
Yeah.
This part concerns me, because I'd like, I'm so concerned where that 700,000 district contribution's going to come from.
Well, we had talked about taking it out of the fund balance, because board policy requires that we keep 15% of our cost in reserve. We do that, we're in access of that, by how many percentage points, Doug? What is our fund balance percentage now?
About 53%.
I'm sorry, how much?
About 53, I'm sorry.
No.
23%.
Thank you.
Which is 53%.
Which translates to a difference between the 15 and the 23 in dollar amounts to about, how much did we figure?
Oh, a million dollars.
Okay, so we have, we have, if you want to look at it that we have an excess fund balance over policy of 15% to the tune of that much money, we, we do have room to help keep the tax levy lower by contributing that much without sacrificing some of the other vegetary needs that we know that are coming up from the technology area, from, from insurance areas, from, from other areas that we have.
We have another option as well, Doug.
And I'm kind of okay with that if the energy efficiency stopped, you know, like.
Tell us about Fund 41, though, we have another option.
Back in, it was 809 and 910, the annual meeting authorized a capital improvements levy, and as of the end of last year, we had approximately $1,300,000 of that left, and it can only, it can't be used to buy any furniture or equipment, but it can be used for construction or remodeling of facilities. So, you could choose to use it on Hills Corners, or on the pool, you know, you've got some options there, depending on how you package these.
Okay, and that's Fund 40, that's Fund 41.
The only objection that I have to that line of thinking is that we have already, as a committee in prior meetings, discussed using portions of that fund in Fund 41 to fund other projects. So, our working balance in that account is less than the account balance in there.
Right.
So, but there's still room in that fund to help offset, there's still room in the fund balance in Fund 10 to offset, there's, there's some room.
Any questions? You're good? I'm, I'm good with that, yeah.
All right, Quinn? Comfortable?
Am I comfortable?
With this?
It's a very nice chair.
Wrong question.
Thank you for asking. You know, I echo what you say, because when we left last Thursday night, it wasn't, it was 21, 8, 9, something or other, and now you see it this. Matt, or Doug, or Lowell, where is the money coming for, for the EES parking lot reconfiguration? Either the operating cost, or either Fund 41?
I don't know, we, I think we.
Right now, it's Fund 41.
41, we're planning to take.
And is that where the bus lane revamp came from as well?
Yes.
You know, we were still planning on doing the staircase at the middle school out of that fund this, this summer?
Yes.
And the 1.3 that is in the current fund, so that's just shy of 300,000 right there. So, that, that fund shrinks to a million real quick, okay? So, I do have concerns about where are we going to get the 700,000 from? Matt, are you still of the opinion that this project's going to come in under?
Yes, well, yes, yes. Simple answer, yes.
Well, are we talking a couple of dollars, are we talking a couple of hundred, or what are we talking? What do you think?
I don't wish project.
Well, I mean, we, we had a little side discussion that, you know, some of this pricing was based on Lake Mills.
Correct.
And Lake Mills is a L-E-E-D certified building.
Mm-hmm, correct.
And with that certification comes considerable cost, right?
Yes.
Now, while we are not going to be that certified, we're going to build a building that's, that meets our needs and is modest.
Mm-hmm.
So, what do you think?
I think the numbers that are being proposed right now are excellent numbers as a starting point, again, for the design parameters of the referendum. And then, you know, once, if the referendum passes at that amount, there's ample time in schematic design to have more committee meetings, and to, you know, further review the drawings, yeah.
So, also with the 700,000, we don't have to put that in the pot, we kind of hold that until we need it?
That would, yeah, I would, well, yes, that's the way we would probably do it, if it turns out that they come in under, then we don't need to use it. The only thing is, remember this, what you saw here earlier was, made it appear at least like that 700 was going to be applied from the very start. And I don't know if you want to do that or not, because, you know, your concerns. I would remind you that one of the reasons that Cullen was selected was because of their track record of bringing projects in on or under budget, and we assume that they can do the same thing for us here, and we hope they can anyway.
Then, I, I would be against this. I think that we need to levy, or to ask for the amount that we need, leave our operating, or our, our savings, or whatever you want to call them, our funds alone, because, as I, and I asked Lisa a very pointed question there about our, the, the non-tertiary, we're going to, we're going to be getting less funds, we still have to operate the school district, we pride ourselves on having a good staff, well-paid staff, and we have, we need, we need to keep that up. So, I'm against it at this, I'm, I'm for it if we ask for the money that we need, okay?
Now, just to clarify, Fund 41s only can be used for construction, so that wouldn't help us with any of our operational costs.
No, we had, Finance and Field City did a three-year plan, you know?
Yeah, you're right.
And so, you know, I say leave that alone, we, we have other needs, maybe not as dire as the ones that we have identified here, but I can look at this list right here and say, you know, we're going to need, unless Matt's pulling our hair here, you know, this is a real, this is a real list.
Yes.
You know, and as you know, because you kept on top of it, there was a three-year list when we got here, three years ago, and.
Some of these still rolled, those still rolled in.
Exactly, you know, and, and I get finances, I get the, and I get that, you can't just get it all done, but we make a list, we try and square them off, so I'm against, I'm, I'm for it at 22.5.
How about 21.8?
No.
22.5 includes 700,000.
I know.
So, take that out.
He wants to ask, you're proposing asking for the true cost of the project, because of other 700,000 for the district contribution.
Oh, so you want a referendum for the 22.5.
Exactly.
So, that's what Quinn wants. Steph, what do you want?
Goodness gracious. Okay, we have a new proposal on the table.
Well, no, not necessarily, that's just, you asked my opinion.
New proposal, well, no, but I get.
I, while, while I understand, while I understand being careful with our money, and I understand that there, there are other costs, considering where our fund balance is and the priority to be placed on getting a new elementary school, and still balancing that with, with working with the tax rate to help our taxpayers, I am, I, I think it's a minor risk to take, and I am still willing to, to be okay with a levy of 21.8 and a district contribution of 700. And, and part of it is, is because I would like to see this done, because it's that important, and I, I just want to be able to do this for our kids. The time has come.
Okay, so you're not willing, well, let's finish and hear what everybody else has to say.
But, let me add to that, that we will, we will almost guarantee that we will be doing short-term lending, or short-term borrowing, correct, Doug? If we dip into our fund balance at that rate?
Yes, you remember the last couple of years, we had set up a line of credit, because while we did a great thing there in defeating all that debt, it has left us in a position where this time of year, I got to send payroll checks out, I have to have some money.
So, and I, and I remember our last board president saying that, and I wish, and I can't say it verbatim, but we shouldn't be using our fund balance for operational needs. Is this operational for need? I don't know. So, the more we take from that, it's going to cost us, it's going to cost us, it's going to cost the value of dollar, and we're going to have less to cover our bills, that's what the fund balance is for. We're gonna have less to cover our bills, that's what the fund balance is for. We start digging into that for, for this, we gotta pay, we gotta pay the piper on the other side. It's really as simple as that.
But there's-
And if you're willing to do it, that's fine, that's your, I just wanna make everybody aware of that, though.
But there's also very few districts that haven't done a short-term borrow. But it's also just what it says, it's a short-term borrow. And I still have faith in our administration and the ability to manage the cash flow that that short-term borrow is going to get paid back as soon as the next tax payment comes in. 'Cause that's usually when we're looking to do it, is because the income taxes that we're collecting from our constituents don't come in lump sum to us. So that's why I've always been comfortable when Doug's come to ask us to be able to have, to go to short-term borrow if he needs it. And I, where it's, where it's what it says, that you're, you're borrowing it for a short term and you're paying me it back right away, I don't think that that is putting any of the funds or other projects in jeopardy.
It's just that we're gonna have to borrow more 'cause we have less in the fund balance.
Well, we actually haven't had to borrow, did we even borrow this year yet?
Yes.
But it was a s-
Before Christmas, to meet that payroll, um, I had to get seven hundred and fifty thousand from the credit line and getting an equal amount tomorrow, but then we'll have the taxes, you know, on Thursday.
So that's not-
I, I'm just saying, it, it's there.
Need doesn't tip it.
Okay?
My concern with taking the seven hundred thousand out of Fund Forty-One has more, more, I have less concern if we have two agenda referendum items and both pass, okay? If Hale's Corner Elementary passes and yet the pool slash some of the energy things that we said are high priority does not, then we could have used some of this Fund Forty-One balance to do some of those that we think need to be done. I mean, that's why those are still coming in, in on that referendum, because we feel that they need to be done sooner than later. So I guess that's my concern with right away not going out and asking, just in case, 'cause otherwise we'd have that sub-hundred thousand to do some of these other projects if it doesn't come in on the referendum. We can always, we're borrowing up to that amount. We can always not, you know, like, we can always give it back sooner, we can always not take it, right? But at least we will have a better idea of what we're going to do or not do, what we have if both referendums pass or if one doesn't. So I guess that's why, I guess initially, I guess on this one, I would almost say at this point, go with it, the, I would be more inclined to go with the total project cost up to the voters, if we're doing two referendum items.
How about down here Nancy?
How much is, how much is the contingency?
Ten percent.
Project contingency, ten?
Five percent.
About nine hundred thousand dollars or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Nine hundred, ten percent. That was like nine hundred, ten percent.
Ten percent, or nine percent?
I know it was like nine hundred.
It's nine hundred and twenty thousand on the sheet.
Um, you know, I mean, I can understand the thought to go for the whole project cost, but I think a twenty-one eight sell is gonna be easier than a twenty-two-five, just like nine ninety-nine sounds a lot less than ten dollars. But, um, I also think that as we go through this project, we're gonna find things that we're gonna want. And, um, like, I'm concerned about the gym, like we talked about with no bleachers and no stage, and it's gonna be, you know, less than I think that what we have now, and I think that we're gonna regret that. And I think that's something that probably as we go along, we're gonna wanna add that. I don't know what we're gonna use the nine hundred thousand dollar contingency fund on, but, um, you know, I, I think we can explain the twenty-two-five. So I, you know, I'd be okay with that, the twenty-two-five, and like we said, we don't have to take all the money. We only, we'll borrow what we need to borrow, and, but at least we have that available.
Jennifer?
I agree, I, um, I mean, I think we brought it up on Thursday, I would rather err on the side of caution in either not borrow the full amount or pay the debt back earlier, pay it towards the taxes, whatever it needs to be. I mean, when you're talking about on a twenty-two million dollar project, an extra, what, three dollars per five hundred thousand, right, on a hundred thousand dollar house? I mean, if we're gonna do the full twenty-two million, why not just have the twenty-five if that's what we need? And then use the seven hundred thousand if, as access, we need it. Not let's plan on using that because we wanna sound better 'cause it's twenty-one eight. I, I think we need to be upfront, I think we need to push for the amount that we need to do the job well. And then if we don't use it all, hopefully we won't, we can use it back instead of scrambling, because we can't borrow more. I mean, you, it is very clear, we can't borrow more. So if we wind up in a situation where we're running out of money, what do we do? Then we're scrambling to find other options which aren't gonna be there. Now is a chance to set us up to be successful when we're actually building two and a half years from now. Not scrambling at the last minute to say, oh no, what are we gonna do, we need an extra five hundred thousand, or we can't do the gym, or we can't do this, or we can't do that, or we lose this, or we lose that. Let's do it now, let's have a base for them to work off of. Not again, not that we're gonna exploit it and use it to the max just because it's there, but let's be sensible about it, let's give ourselves a chance to be successful in the end, and then we'll all benefit, benefit from it as a community. So I, twenty-two-five, whatever we think it'll be for the total project cost, to do what we need to have done. District contribution, seven hundred thousand, whatever it may be, we use that as a extra contingency of need be. But I, I think we bought, we asked for what we need and we worked from there.
Um, John?
Yeah?
Are you following this discussion at all, or should I give you a quick-
Oh, yep, no, I'm right there.
Okay, so what are your thoughts? We're looking at the seven hundred thousand district contribution with levying, or referendum cost of twenty-one point eight. And there's a couple of board members wanting, maybe let's just go twenty-two point five on the referendum.
Yeah, actually, I, I heard, I don't know, it's working well tonight, I heard the sound very well. First thing, I think Quinn's in a more comfortable chair than me. But, uh, but anyway, you know, I'm, I'm right there with Quinn on, I mean, I would rather, it would be nice to borrow less money, on the other hand, I think we need to borrow what we need for the project and not, not, um, we shouldn't have any, you know, well, we hope we don't need to tap into the seven hundred thousand kinda thing. I, I, I think we need to borrow an honest figure for what we need for the project, or at least we need to put that honest figure for the project in front of the folks and, and, you know, in front of the voting public and let them choose. But, um, you know, the, the, I mean, everybody I heard, that they all had, you know, valid points, of course. You know, like, are we, are we counting some of the same money in, in Fund Forty-One more than once? 'Cause if we, if we don't, uh, if we don't incorporate the energy project into the referendum, or if we do and it doesn't pass, we're gonna need to do some piece of that, uh, for the, like, for example, for the panels on the high school at some point, uh, even if in a stepwise fashion, but there are some things that need to be taken care of that we had projected out through Funds Forty-One. So we still need to be able to carry out that projection. So I, I think it would be a mistake to roll that, uh, to count on seven hundred thousand from Fund Forty-One. If we go forward with an H C E referendum, I think we need a, it would be nice if we could get the, uh, you know, the, the full figure down lower, but I think we need to ask for the full figure.
Okay. Um, I am thinking about my neighbors who were all sitting there watching the Packers win, you know, and what would they, how would I explain this to them? How do I explain this to them? And they, several of them remembered those numbers on the referendum question, and I asked them, what do you guys think? So I will have to explain to them why we're, why we're going so much higher. Because right now, there's, there's enough support here, and I trust you guys that this is what we should do. We should go twenty-two point five, then how do I explain the difference? And I can at least say, you know what? This new school is gonna have the kind of safety that the public can use access parts of the building and they can access the rest, that if anything happens, if anyone walks in this building, we're gonna be able to, those, all those doors go shut and the kids are safer. You know, I'll be able to say, we're gonna have learning pods where kids, where kids and teachers can work much more effi- efficiently and much more collaboratively to deliver a curriculum that better meets the needs of kids. You know, I have to be able to explain this, that we won't have the, having to carry kids up and downstairs or whatever we do, who kids are in wheelchairs, you know, I have to explain all that.
Well, I think too-
And we looked at, let me finish.
Explains the same, real cost of the project.
It does. And we looked at the space needs of all of our kids, the diversity of kids that we've got in there, and we still didn't go with everything we could have. You know, that's what I have to tell my neighbors, and we, we really didn't put everything in we could've, but we thought that this was a, a more reasonable cost, although it was a little higher than we thought it would be, we're all willing to go with it. So I will go along with what you all say is important on this. I would have preferred to stick with the twenty-one point eight, that's what I would have preferred, but I'll go along with twenty-two point five. Um, how about you, Steph?
Well, I can, I can certainly support twenty-two point five, that's, that's not a problem.
The arguments make a lot of sense for why the seven hundred thousand could be used for the other projects 'cause we're not doing everything. I just, I think you guys made good arguments on that, for that.
Then that also means that we, the board, have to remember this discussion and hold it accountable so that we're not using four, Forty-One more than once. We have to, you know, we have to-
Right.
Commit to, to holding them accountable for this. And also understand that if we do end up with that extra, which I really hope we do, that we seriously consider some of the options we have, especially like Lisa mentioned, that we pay down some of that debt right away so that we can help our taxpayers out. If we're not doing it on the front end, then let's be committed to doing it on the back end if we can.
All right. I think we're there, yes?
One other thing I wanted to know, you know, regarding the survey, this project came in higher, and we all discussed it last week, the other two came in lower than even the-
Correct.
Bare animal. So even if you, even for the pool, if you threw in the weight room, that's five point six, our range was five to seven million. So even if we did the pool and the weight room and this, there's likelihood in the end we could come in under as across the board, under what we said by the survey. So again, I mean, if we're looking at it in a vacuum, yes, this came in higher than the survey range, but if we're taking them all together as one project, it could end up being about the same cost across the board that we thought initially.
When you look at the, uh, interest rate, was calculated at four point two five originally. So that impacts what the bottom line is, what we're gonna cost us now.
You're absolutely right.
You know, it's gonna be a hard sell to say, well, we got a cheaper interest rate, so we spent more. Well, no.
That's not what we did.
We didn't, exactly.
But we, but we're getting what we want, we're getting what we need for this project-
Right.
To make sense, to, to last seventy-five years.
And we're trying to do it the right way, instead of cut corners and, and set ourselves up. We were trying to do it the right way.
Um, Lisa, what is the, we were at a dollar thirty-seven, at twenty-two-five, do you know approximately where, where are we at?
Add six cents to that.
Add six cents?
One forty-three.
So one forty-three, so it's a hundred and forty-three dollars per hundred thousand, okay.
That's still within the range we said in the survey? Or how far over are we?
Three bucks off.
I'm sorry, what? Three dollars over, it was a hundred and forty?
He said one forty.
One forty, okay, good point. So that takes care of H C E number one. Let's move to, um, second project then, which is, I believe, uh, pool. And again, we're at four point six million for the pool, the pros? Yeah, let's do the pros. What are those pros and cons?
Shannon, will you, uh, confirm the scope of the pool that we're talking about for?
Oh, it's eight lane.
Yes.
It is at the moment at an eight lane pool. So we can talk about that. Also, um, on the calendar, it's been on, the pros on this, from what I've heard, and if you, if there's anything really big you think of, it's been on the calendar a long time, we've had many complaints over the years. We've known for a long time that the pool needs an upgrade. It is our most used athletic facility. This plan addresses the safety needs of the pool deck and people walking around on the pool deck and coming through the locker room to get at the pool. It addresses the, the, some of the handicap accessibility needs, 'cause the locker rooms will get upgraded, and usability concerns about coming through the locker room to get there. Locker room, there will be a separate entrance for the public, so it can be designed for better community experience, correct? Those are the pros of doing that, doing it now, again, interest rates are lower. The cons, even if we do it now, this is the challenging one, we are somewhat space limited. We may still not have enough space for as much seating as we wanted. There's some seating, so don't, it's not, not enough space for any seating, it's for enough seating. Uh, there still would possibly be issues with the diving lanes, and we still have to, the downside with all these, we'd have to increase taxes to do it. And there actually was a little bit less support for the pool in the survey, so keeping that in mind. Now go back, do we want to, to move ahead with this project? I just wanna reiterate, it's a separate question, we're gonna do Hale's Corners as a separate question, okay? So now, do we wanna do the pool? And, or if not, is everyone comfortable moving forward with the pool? And I'm gonna start on this end, 'cause I think I heard some rumblings down here. Who wants to start out with the pool and maybe go back to the project, scope of that project? For the, back, the slides up just a little bit to the cost. Right there, four point six? Okay, what are your thoughts?
Well, my first thought is that we should've taken care of the pool many years ago, but we didn't, so, um, you know, obviously something needs to be done with the pool. I thought a lot about this after our meeting last weekend, I kept thinking about what we were talking about, are we being, what was the phrase?
Visionary?
Visionary, are we being visionary? And I don't think we're being visionary with the pool. I think we're taking the space that we have and trying to make it work. And I don't think that, I mean, it'll work better than it does now, but I don't think it's gonna be, um, you know, in ten years, I think we're gonna say, why did they do this? You know, why didn't they do, why didn't they expand the pool area, why didn't they do that? So I don't know, I, I think definitely something, we need to do something with the pool, I'm not sure that this is the right answer.
Jennifer?
I agree. I, um, something needs to be done, but if we're trying to get away from putting small Band-Aids on large projects, I think this is another perfect example, where you can take it Falcon Field, maybe. Or just to say we wanna stay competitive with our facilities for athletics, or for the district as a whole, with other districts around us, what they're doing with the high schools and the renovations and the new facilities available there. I think there's an opportunity, it was brought up last week, the opportunity of potentially building a separate building with the pool, um, some connected to the campus, um, and then better utilizing the space in the building itself. Whether we fill in the pool and make that a weight, a facility room, or, excuse me, a fitness room, and then we utilize the existing weight room for the dance and pom teams. I, I think it's, if we're gonna be visionary, if we're gonna look at it, if we're gonna look for this amount, I, I think it's something to think about, it's something to consider. But not to the point of let's put it off for five years and then come back and revisit it. Let's have a plan to figure out what we're gonna do, what the community wants and is behind, and move forward with it.
All right, come on over here. Quinn?
Oh, this is one time I don't wanna talk. I'm, I'm baffled, speechless.
That's something you never know.
Wow, it's a good one.
Do you wanna wait a minute and we'll let Steph?
Yeah, go right ahead.
No, seriously, stop me, go ahead.
Seriously, Quinn, please, if you're baffled, I wanna hear this.
Phil, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question of Nick Bell?
Yeah.
Why did you say six lanes instead of eight lanes? Because I would always think that eight lanes would be better than six.
Uh, well, because then you have the diving boards in the middle of the pool, so during practice and meet warm-ups, during the meet, you have to move the lanes. So during practice, you only have six lanes, because it takes two lanes to run the diving board. So you're losing the space there. And then during the meet warm-ups, you have, you have to have those lanes taken out again. Then you have the diving board in the way of the blocks. When you do, start your arm swing, and at a green field, there's oftentimes you'll hit the diving boards that's right there. Um, then during practice, the diving well is used for many kicking exercises, holding weight, medicine balls above your head and kicking, and if you're in the lane where the deep end is, you're gonna be in the way of the other swimmers. I mean, that's basically the big thing, so you're not, the only time you're really gonna be gaining the space is during the competition, during a big competition, because heck, all the big competitions we go to are six lanes and they work great. We went to one this weekend with fourteen teams, uh, each team had thirty-three entries. I mean, you can do the math, how many entries there are there. Each team uses every entry into the six-lane pool, and it ran great.
I also think we should hear from our athletic director though, because there's other views. Just to get some other views on that, would you like to tell us?
Jackie too.
The coaches were asked, and Jackie, I think we asked coaches as well, we don't always get the same opinion. The coaches were asked, and Jackie, I think we asked coaches as well. We don't always get the same opinion.
And speaking with George Gudie, who's both the boys and girls head coach for swim, and also heavily involved in the SWAT, who rents our space and utilizes it a lot. Both of the feelings on that is that an eight lane pool would be the best for them.
For what reason?
They didn't cite a specific reason other than that was what they had wanted.
And I just need to clarify, it's six lanes, but a dri, diving area.
With the diving.
So it's the same amount, not the same amount.
Slightly smaller.
Slightly smaller, okay.
Can we, can we ask Scott and Jackie to talk on their ideas about, I mean, the two projects, whether, what they feel? I mean, I know you're not prepared for that, but just your thoughts on it. So it's, you're the one that's going to be running it going forward.
And if you wouldn't mind, just come on, come on up and sit up here for a few minutes while we determine this one. That would be helpful. Thank you.
Everybody knows athletic directors and high school principals are not shy, so share your thoughts.
This might, okay, share your thoughts. But the other option would be, I think we asked for some numbers possibly to, what would it cost if we did an eight lane pool somewhere else, correct? I think you guys might have put together a few numbers for us on that. No. Yeah.
No, we haven't had a chance to.
No one has done that? At all on that, okay. Alright, just thought maybe you had, because we have had some side discussions about that, okay.
Exactly, you're asking our opinion of six or eight lanes, or?
No, no, no.
Just the project.
Do you think what we're proposing here is going to work? Obviously, it'll fix the pool now. But do you think five years from now you're going to say, hey, this is really beneficial? Let me rephrase that.
I think it meets our needs in terms of a pool.
Okay.
I mean, because, you know, we're probably not going to ask you in five years for a 10 lane pool.
Yeah.
You know, so I think that in terms of pool space, you know, for curricular purposes and, you know, for swim practice and things like that, I feel like it meets our needs.
And I'll just chime into that. When I sat down with the team, when we put that schematic design together, Mr. Goody was in that, and his opinion of having the eight lane preference was, has not changed in that time.
And the six to eight can change later, right?
I don't think that's really, I don't know why we're even discussing that.
Yeah, because that's not the biggest issue.
We're still, we're going to, the same footprint, how they divide it up.
Yes.
That's up to them, same cost, right? For pretty close.
So I think it comes down to, are we off base with thinking that we should look at something more visionary or more practical or better use of space, whatever, or are we comfortable with going with this? Obviously, we're just sitting here, you two live with it every day.
I think the areas for us where we, you know, still have concerns are, have to do with other spaces, you know, and making sure that the fitness center is, you know, can be accessed as truly a fitness center and that, you know, we have enough space in there that the, when they're using it for classrooms, that they have enough space as well as opening it up to the community in the evening. And I think in order to have the community access it, you have to change what's there. Otherwise, it will continue to be utilized in the same fashion that it is and just be a little bit bigger. But that's different. You know, that's a totally different need. You know, I think that we have a need for a space for the dance and, you know, cheerleaders and some of those things. The reason I'm mentioning them is when you talk about being visionary, I think those are things you're thinking of, is what are, what are all of our needs?
Exactly.
But in terms of a need for the people that access our pool during the day for curricular purposes, as well as the teams, I think that the plan.
Solves the problem.
Okay. Lowell wants to talk, and then we got to hear from these guys.
Okay, just real quick, the freestanding idea is a cool idea. It really is. I mean, you look at places like Whitewater and it's a, besides the high school facility, they have, they have a training facility, you know, and it's open to the public. But when you do that, you cannot have a freestanding pool without having locker rooms because you can't walk back and forth to the car and stuff. So that's a big expense. The, you know, everything from the, if you, whenever you're building, even if you use the pre-fab, what is that called? The, the big?
Pre-cast panels.
Yeah, you know, the pre-cast panels. Take it from, I'm just being conservative, and that's who I am. I'm conservative when it comes to that. I want something that, and sometimes I assume too much, but the community can afford and the, and the kids need. We need it for our curriculum stuff and we need it for our swimming stuff. I think it's a well-thought-out solution. Is it you know, a big aquatic center? No, it's not. It would be cool to have it, but can our community afford it? I don't know. You guys know that better than me.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I appreciate you asking the questions because you're giving me time to figure. I actually think we are being visionary. Because for one, the survey came back 50-ish, right? This, we don't, this district does not have the appetite for the cost of a freestanding building. I can guarantee you that after we build HCE. It's not going to happen. I think, I think our opportunity is right now. I sit out there, except on Monday nights, to pick up my daughter from basketball, and I see the cars streaming and little kids getting out, and big kids getting out. I mean, it's unbelievable. They're using that pool the way it is right now. We upgrade it to this, my God. I, I, we have, we have one of these natatoriums in Greenfield, two miles down the road. We're going to put one up? Why? This, this meets our needs sufficiently. It's going to be good for many years, I would believe. I don't think we will be, I don't think there'll be buyer's remorse in 10 years. I think it'll be churning out a lot of swimmers. It'll be a lot of activities. I think that the one thing that might get this approved is where the price came in. I think that, and I'd love to do it, you know, bundle something on there because it came under. But I am afraid to do that. I think, I think the pool is in dire need. I think it's an insurance risk. And I think that at 4.6, it'll, it'll pass. And so I am all for that.
The pool, just like Hills Corners, needs to be done.
It, it just, it needs to be done. And, you know, I really struggle with visionary because as much as I appreciate us trying to look ahead, sometimes I wonder how far we look ahead as to relation as to where trends will be. And I, I want to build something that, that is, is going to address whatever needs and trends, and, well, trends is the wrong word, but whatever needs that we know for sure and make sure that we have a solid building that's, that's, that's safe for our kids and that works for what our program is. And I, I would worry about any delay with trying to do a freestanding building. I would worry about the cost involved after hopefully HCE gets passed. So I would, I would rather, as long as you feel that it meets our present needs for our program now, that it meets our curricular needs, that we know that it meets our community needs, I would, I would really like to go ahead and get it done.
Okay. John, do you want to chime in here on just the pool?
I couldn't agree more with, with Stephanie and Quinn. I think that free, and with Lowell, a freestanding building, the cost would skyrocket out of possibility. I think that the plan we have has been in the works for years, realizing the whole six lane, eight lane thing, I think is, is a little bit premature. It certainly deserves some research. But just like HCE, even though this plan has been in the works longer, just like HCE, you know, it's, we're, you know, we don't have final drawings yet. I mean, you know, research can still be done, but the proposed footprint sounds like it would be, you know, quite sufficient. I would be, so long as we can retain the flexibility of that upper deck, like we've discussed, I would be in favor of, of a standalone project, not a standalone building, but a non-bundled pool project at 4.6. And I think it's important to emphasize to the architect and the construction management that, and I know Lowell and Matt would be on this, that 4.6 or 22.5, you know, these, these aren't targets, these are ceilings. But I'm in favor of the 4.6 on its own pool project for all the positive reasons that were stated.
Alright, Eileen?
Yeah, I'm afraid if we get too visionary, this will like absolutely be forever to get, to get done. Especially kind of taking in consideration kind of the size of our community. I think it would be a hard time. Also knowing like Hills Corners is looking at some point in time to maybe do their library. I mean, so there's going to be lots of needs within, within our community. Especially coming, something visionary and big, coming on the heels of something big at Hills Corners Elementary, I think it's going to be a long time. I think what we have here will sufficiently meet our needs. I think, you know, and if meets the needs of, from what we understand from the community and how the community has been using it for quite a while, I'm just afraid it would take, it'd be many years down the line. So I'd be in favor of moving the pool forward. And actually, I'm thinking along the lines of moving it forward. I know we'll get into it later, maybe as a standalone and maybe some of the other things that we discussed with taking the full amount of the project for HCE and keeping the money that we have in Fund 41, maybe we can pull off some of those energy efficiency pieces and keep the pool as a standalone item and give it, give it its best chance of going forward.
Okay, I, I'm glad you brought up the vision thing though, because I've always had this feeling that, oh, we're just not doing something right at that high school or something not right. Well, of course it's not right because it's an older building and we really haven't studied everything there. So I'm glad you brought that up because what is the vision for that? But I think you also helped me to realize, I think we're good on the pool part. Because I don't think we will ever need to build a bigger pool and a fancier one. I think I feel real comfortable moving ahead with the 4.6. But I also agree with you guys though, when we start looking at these other issues at the high school, we haven't addressed those. And so can we look more visionary at the rest of that building? Because knowing that I don't feel like we'll ever support more for that pool than what we can get right now. That's how I feel. Now, would you two be able to support this? Because it sounds like we have pretty good support for moving this forward at 4.6 million. Could you guys still support that? That doesn't really matter.
Well, even after the discussion, we're, you know, what are we thinking after the discussion, I guess?
What do you think? It does matter. Because we want to try to pull together everyone if we can. If we can't, we can't. But I think it's important that we do.
Yeah, I mean, if we've had the discussion, I think that was, at least my point, that was my point, to bring up the discussion, to talk and to have the people that are going to utilize it and that are going to be here trying to make it work, so to speak. If they're comfortable with it, then we can move forward. But at least we had the discussion. We know what's out there. We know the options. If it doesn't work, fine. I think, I agree that something needs to be done. Mine is just, are we looking at all the options? Have we considered it all? Have we thought it through? Do we think it'll work? If not, great, let's move forward, so we can get something done. I just think that we've also laid the groundwork that we're going to have to have discussions about what are we going to do? You know, obviously, the weight room is a piece of it, but for the other groups, we're going to have to have those discussions going forward. But at least we've broached that, and so we know going forward that, hey, we're going to have to have that conversation.
You know, I agree with Jonathan, but you know, it's, we're still just, yeah, it'll be okay. It'll be adequate. It'll meet our needs. It's not something that we're really excited about. I don't hear any excitement from you guys. Yeah, it's okay. It'll be all right. So, it's okay. It'll be all right.
I, I disagree. I think it's a big deal to fix a pool. It's expensive. I know that the one that my kids went to is still not fixed because when you look at the, you know, priority of needs in a district, fixing a pool doesn't always fall up there. That's why it's still sit there. So to me, if we put this on the referendum, they may not be showing attention, but to fix the depth of that pool so that's a safety issue, so kids can dive off the edge, it's, it is a big deal to at least get that fixed.
Yeah, the locker rooms, the, I mean, all of that is.
Locker rooms are horrible. You don't have to walk through the locker rooms.
The entryway?
Entryway. I mean, there's an awful lot to really like about this place.
Hey, Luanne?
Yeah. John?
Yeah, just, if you could see me, you'd know I'm excited about it.
Okay, are you jumping up and down or what? Somersaults?
Oh, yeah.
Can you describe to us what you're doing at this moment? No, I'm kidding. It's okay. Just so you're comfortable. Sorry.
Yep.
Okay, there was one student who had a question. Yes, our student.
Former, how's that?
A question.
Kevin Stoviac, I live at 11912 West Woodside Drive, Hills Corners. It seems that you're turning the project into more of, I mean, everybody, John has the enthusiasm, I hear, I know a few of you do, but it's turning it into, as he said, meets the needs while there's one down the road, two miles. Why should we build something like that? You got to think about your future students too. You're going to end up being the other school in Greenfield at that point. No one's going to want to come here with the lackluster facilities versus Greenfield. That's just a thought for one thing. You're talking about safety. Depth is one thing, but you're a lawsuit away from shutting the school down with somebody slipping on the pool deck just for walking in at a meet. I mean, that's, I can't believe that hasn't happened yet. I mean, how many people have actually been to a swim meet here? Probably none because we haven't had a swim meet in forever. You have.
We had one last year.
Yeah, we have one a year.
And I have.
And it's not really a legitimate swim meet.
Well, two if you're counting the girls.
Yeah.
But as far as per team, per season, that's not what I meant. You're talking about one per season and you're starting inside the pool. None of those times count. None of those times matter. When you're talking about six lanes versus eight lanes, that's going to bring down costs if you're going six versus eight. You have to dig out a lot more if you're going to push eight lanes. You have to widen that pool well and fix everything. And I think the bigger idea in what you're talking about here, about meets the needs and expectations, the biggest concern is the fact that you're cutting into that wrestling room. And that's, that's really keeping the project from being what it can be versus what it is right now. I mean, you're talking about being a visionary and building the, one of the ideas that you brought up on the facilities and finance meeting as far as building another structure, another building in that half a courtyard that's next to the cafeteria. That's more or less something you need to look at as far as an extra room for wrestling or for dance to try and expand. But as far as being visionary, I, I really don't see it. I don't know, you said you talked to George, the swim coach. What dive coaches have you talked to? We talked about this. Who are you going to discuss this with? It doesn't seem like much reasoning has come behind as far as your eight lane, six lanes, which as you said, you want to table that for later. That's something that we don't necessarily need to talk about right now. But you're talking about you have to compete with the other schools in the area. What are you bringing to the table versus them? And you're going to look at our school compared to Greenfield's now. There's a significant difference than it was eight years ago when Greenfield was the lesser school than we are. And these are things you need to consider. I don't think people have given enough thought. I definitely think it needs to get done right now. This is the opportunity for it. But more thought needs to go into how you're going to turn it into something that's useful and also competes with the other schools in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much. Alright. So I'm hearing any other comments or thoughts at this point on the pool? People's hearing support then for 4.6 million, moving it forward, taking into consideration that we're not etched in stone whether it's four or six? I'm sorry. It is not four or six, six or eight. We're good? 4.6. Alright. Let's move that forward for now, and then we will take a formal vote on all of these projects. At the end, question again, how much was the rate on the, you got it there?
Yeah, right here.
$29 for 100,000.
29 for 100,000? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted. Point two nine? Per thousand? Point two nine nine per thousand. Okay, thank you. Alright, next up, we are looking at two more projects. The weight room, which we did pull out of the, separate that out. Coming out of the committee, it was decided, if I remember right, the committee was not recommending we go forward with the weight room at this time. Pros and cons, there's just a couple of things to look at here. The pros, there is a bit of a cost savings by upgrading it with the pool because the construction theme is there. It does improve accessibility and usability if we expand it. It does improve accessibility and usability if we expand it, and the weight room supports all sports, and I will tell you that all my neighbors in the living room, this was their top priority, was getting this weight room fixed. Okay, the cons, adds to the cost, because they're the ones that said it does support all the sports, and I hadn't really thought of that. The cons are that it does add to the cost of the project. We feel at this time, it increased the risk of failure to do all of the projects at once, and it's harder to explain more when it comes to a referendum. There's more pros and cons, but for now, how are you feeling about holding off on the weight room? And let's see, we started down there, how about this end? Or John, do you wanna start us off on the weight room? I think I know how you feel about that.
Yeah, I, I think we need to hold off on the weight room. It's, it's kind of a lot to pile on to the pool, but it's, I think the concern is, you know, we keep adding more in there and we're likely to not get anything for the district, you know, for the kids. And so I think that it's, it's more important at this point to try to stage stuff out and let things stand on their own merits, and I think that means letting the pool stand alone. And, and I know that, you know, that your question for the energy concern will come up, but, you know, we've already addressed how, how that can stand alone as well. So I think the pool needs to stand alone, and I think we can't do more than a couple of questions, so I think the weight room needs to be on hold for now.
All right, Eileen, how do you feel about that?
Well, I feel like we really should be addressing the weight room now. And you know, and that's, you know, input from, you know, my son and some of his friends. It's not significantly more, you know, on, on an annual basis to a property. However, even though it might only be at the, at the high end, what, eighteen dollars a year, I'm still afraid that it will, as much as I know we need it, and I really think we could use the expansion now, I just feel that the, the way it would be viewed by the taxpayers is adding more and more and more on, and they might not look at the fact that it's really only eighteen dollars a year. So I'm afraid that it would put the pool at risk by adding it on. But I will say that I do feel that it could be done now, but I'm just afraid it, we won't get anything done, and I, I don't wanna see that happen.
Okay, I think it's...
It's eighteen for three hundred thousand, so it's, so it's from six to eighteen dollars a year depending on the property.
Six, yeah, okay. Sticking with my chart here, six.
Which is less than a cup of coffee at Starbucks a month.
Interesting. Okay, how about you two?
Do I have news either?
You know, again, I keep coming back to, we wouldn't be discussing it if it wasn't a need, so yes, it's a need, but this isn't about our needs anymore, this is about setting a priority. And yes, the weight room is important, but when I compare it to the other things that we're talking about, it's just not as important right now. So I think it needs to wait. I think we need to focus our, I almost said energy, focus our resources and our attention onto Hills Corners and, and the pool. So, thank you.
Quinn?
Am I correct in seeing that Scott and Jackie, that there are pieces of equipment in place in the weight room now that are not functional? How many?
I don't know that I can give you the exact number, but...
Ballpark it, three, five, ten?
Between three and five.
Okay. And how often do we, do we buy new equipment, or do we?
As needed.
When was the last time we purchased a new piece of equipment?
Don't know. I couldn't tell you.
He's only been here two years, right?
Yeah, they, when the equipment was initially purchased in there, there really, it's been maintained and repaired, nothing has been replaced.
And how long is that, was that purchased?
Before I was at the high school.
Nineteen, probably nineteen ninety-nine?
Nineteen ninety-nine.
With that referendum project, and then maybe some additions in equipment along the way. I can tell you that, you know, I don't, I don't have any recollection of it.
What I would be in favor of would be to have a third question with not a new building for, not an expanded building for the weight room, but new equipment for the weight room. Include it with energy and put on there, I guess, the better, better wishes of our experts saying, you know, three questions are gonna fall off, but let's let the people decide. Let's put it out there and say, you know, there was, in a survey, there was appetite for it. I go through the hallway, as you guys go through the hallway, and it's constantly being used. Yes, Jackie and I talked, the public's not gonna use it much. You know, if, if we built a new one, if we expanded it, and we had a grand opening, and the parents would come for the first time, and then they come the second time, you see all these kids in there, and that'd be the last time they came. Not against kids, but they don't, it's not gonna, no. Far majority is for our students. But that's what I'd be in favor of, packaging it with the energy updates, because somewhere along the line, we're gonna have to address it. And as we talked earlier, where do we get the money from addressing it? Matt's budget, I guess, have some big fundraisers, gonna have to get creative. So I would be in favor of new equipment, not expansion, new equipment and bundle it with energy.
How about Nancy? You wanna do the weight room and, right now, or wait, or what do you think?
Well, I actually, I'd like to hear from Jackie and Scott about it.
I feel like the, and I would refer to it more as a fitness center, because I see it more as a space for all kids, and I think weight room means I'm going in there to, for a different purpose. I think that that's an area where holding off allows us to be more visionary and, you know, really look at the space and what can be done. There are a lot of communities that, you know, have full desk, and you have someone manning it, and we do have someone who's supervising the space, but that's a different, you know, purpose. I think that the, the current plan expands the size, but I don't think it will change the, the use all that much.
The increased, I mean, of lately, the increased use, I would, I would also agree with Jackie in the sense that it, it's not a weight room anymore, I would hesitate to call it that. There's a lot of agility, strength, speed, and quickness, things that they do that require more floor space that we don't have. You know, again, and the same thing happens during the instructional day as well. Those classes, some of those classes have moved to, it's not just, it's not weightlifting or weight training, it's strength and conditioning, which requires, again, more of a floor space to do the activities that are necessary, and with class sizes where they are, that space would be, you know, better and a larger capacity. Again, I don't think we're addressing the, I suppose to speak to the visionary stuff, visionary doesn't come without a price tag a lot of times, and that's the reality of it. But I hesitate to have kids, you know, doing their agility ladders in the hallway while parents are trying to come in for our events. That's kinda where I'm at with that, but it does, it could be addressed, it just, I don't know that it's the capacity that we're at now.
So is the, is the expanded footprint that was presented, would that be enough room? Or would it just be okay for now and...
I, I would say, I comfortably could say it would be okay for now. I don't, again, you wanna be visionary, or do you wanna, do we wanna be good enough for now?
Right, well, that's why I'm asking you.
Visionary?
Visionary, okay.
I'll go with the visionary side.
Okay. So with the proposed expansion, would not be visionary enough in your opinion?
Yes, my professional opinion.
Well, then I'm good to hold on it. Lowell, do you have anything to add, and then Jonathan?
I just like watching Scott trying to come up with an answer there, I always, I enjoy that.
Glad I could provide some...
No, I, I hundred percent agree with what everybody's been saying. And there are, you know, when you're talking about, you know, at some point being visionary and maybe using that space in the courtyard where you would, could maybe connect it and not have to have locker rooms right there because they're down the hall, you know, that might make sense, and when you talk about the, the precast walls and the potential there and the difference in space, large spaces versus small spaces, we get to know Cullen well and see how well they do, we could always maybe come up with something more visionary down the road for it, because it really deserves to, I mean, like you said, our powerlifting, that's the only thing I feel, it's not the only thing I feel bad about, because it's constantly, there's kids there for every sport, like Luanne said. We need to come up, we need to come up with something in the short term, I'm not sure that's it. You know, there might be a better option. We've done some exploration and talking about it, moving storage, at least giving them some more room through that, that other wall, you know, that kinda stuff. So maybe there's other short-term solutions other than that. But I also, like you said, about the experts, the reason we have them is because they have the experience, and when they, you know, when they say, try to focus on two, if at all possible, and I know there's times when it's not possible, but if it's possible, let's do that, especially if we're not using the seven hundred thousand or fund balance, and we still might have contingency left when everything is said and done, you know, for the other projects we have to do, so no pressure, Cullen.
Jonathan, did you...
Well, I think in the pros, supports all sports, it should really say supports all students, whether it's for athletic training or gym class, or kids that are, Son is club soccer, right? He should be able to use a fitness center here if he wants to use that tool. I mean, I, I'm in the same situation. I mean, it shouldn't just be for sports, it's used throughout the day for all the different groups, and it should be there, and it should be, if we make it where it's something that the community wants to come to, it can be a community center, where community members can come and work out, however that looks down the vision, but having a desk, having somebody manning, having the equipment that people wanna use. And then it's for the whole community, not just the sports. I think that's what we need to get away from. And then, I mean, looking at this, the, I think what you said about getting the equipment, it's ninety thousand, that's what was budgeted in the product development. I mean, that's, whether it's another question, or we talk to Doug to see if there's a way to do that, if that's what's keeping us away from having useful equipment, let's figure it out.
All right. I would agree with delaying this project, much as I would like to do it all right now. I think you've convinced me, and I, I like the idea of the vision, of thinking that through, and that's all I have to say. So I think I'm hearing consensus that we just wait on this, we wait on the, wait on the weight room slash fitness, the fitness center, and continue to study it and put that into our facility and finance committee's hands, to continue to monitor and keep us updated on this project.
Yeah, with the plan to actually look through, like we've done what they've seen, everything, and not just...
Right. I would like even the broader discussion, not just, well, let's go on to the next project. Let's just hold up, hold that there, hold that on. The next project then would be the energy projects, which again, affect the high school. There was a suggestion, and, and the more I thought about it, the more I thought, yeah, okay, this could really work. What if we pulled out the boilers? I think that's what we did here, didn't we? Pulled out the boil, we had a boiler cost of, I wanna say, three hundred thousand in there? And I think we pulled that out.
Four hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Four hundred and thirty-four? Okay. So go to the pros and cons of this, it was possible to just pull out a little bit. The boilers are outdated, we know that. This would address some of our energy issues. We would get air conditioned, it does air condition the gym and the weight room if we move forward with this. Even if we don't expand the weight room, whatever they're gonna have to do, Matt informs me, it will affect the weight room. It does, it, it will improve classroom ventilation, and it's not practical to address those outside walls in segments, so this really should be done all at once. And there was support in the survey for these energy things. Now, the con is the boilers still work, so that's why it's possible we could pull them out. Doing all the projects increases the risk of failure, this increases taxes, so when we left the finance facility committee, we were leaving all of this out. And then we, we thought maybe we could do a high school pool and energy update as a possible referendum question that could address some of those bigger bonding issues like those walls and the air conditioning in the gym. That was just a little bit more you could add on to the four point six. What are your thoughts on this? Should we drop this and let this become part of the visionary high school planning in the future? Do we move parts of this forward? What are your thoughts? And I, I'll defer to whoever feels really ready to talk first.
Well, I'd like to ask Matt a question. In our three-year financing facility and, what's the T for? Tech? Plant? No. F, F, and T? Plan?
That's an old acronym from previous...
Okay, anyways, you have in here to replace the Whitno High School curtain wall replacement, phase one, second floor exterior, two hundred thousand in fifteen and sixteen. In sixteen and seventeen, you have the same thing except replace the curtain wall, phase two cafeteria, two hundred thousand. So that's a big difference in money, what, between one point nine and, and four hundred thousand?
When that plan was put together, I was considering, you know, the board was, how the board was gonna be levying for these projects, that discussion would have to be had in the fifteen, sixteen budget year, how much money, you know, is the board willing to levy for that, for the exterior wall? If the board didn't levy for it, that the money could come out of the Fund Forty One account potentially, or it could still fall under the revenue limit. So without having a solid idea of where that funding was gonna be in the three-year plan, I thought it was best to include it in the plan, because it's an important component for the high school. But at the same time, if we can do it in one, in one project, we'll have more consistency throughout the building, instead of just, okay, how many, how many panels and classrooms can we get this year? How many panels and classrooms can we get next year? So, and, and there's, you know, there's a larger discussion that needs to be had with that, if we were to follow the long-range plan there, because there would be some potential levy impact.
But I, I don't understand, when we talked, I was under the impression that the two phases, that was it, at four hundred thousand dollars. Now I see it's one point nine.
Well, we, we added in the temp spec classroom unit ventilators as well as project. Now, now, my original project idea that I had for those exterior walls was to include those temp spec units, but now we're putting them all in at one time.
Well, I don't see that verbiage anywhere.
Well, no, it wasn't, it wasn't there.
But I guess to Quinn, your point is the two four hundred thousand, it's not going to do the same amount of work as what you're describing here.
No, that was a phased approach, and it was a phased approach that I felt the district could afford at the time that that plan was written three years ago.
So there would be more two hundred thousand in your form?
It would just be an ongoing number, similar to like a roofing plan, where, okay, we're gonna do X amount of roofing sections per year, this is what we can afford to spend on roofs every year, so we're gonna see how much we can get done in, in square footage per year.
So then how many phases would, how many, what, I need to know the scope, I guess, because here you're saying second floor exterior, so I'm assuming that's the whole second floor.
Most, yeah, but with the focus there was mostly on the science wing, the rusted panels that we have. See, we're gonna try to take care of the high priorities in the panels first, and then try to work maybe back into the south wing. It's an extensive project, but I wanted to make sure we included it in that, in that three-year plan. I didn't want it to be left out. I mean, sure, I could've put two million dollars in, year two in the three-year plan, but then how would the board have reacted to that?
Yeah.
I mean...
Whoa, 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 you have it in your third year, you have identify high priority energy products for performance contract.
Correct.
Two point two, so I mean, there are big numbers in there.
Right.
Right? I mean, I, I guess, I wish you would've explained it to this depth when we discussed this plan, because I was under the assumption that that's what it was, was two phases, two four hundred thousand dollars, and we're good to go. Now I see this, so I'm, I'm a little bit more surprised.
Well, I mean, now we have an opportunity, when that plan was drawn up, the referendum wasn't even on the table for, for the opportunity.
Well, this is 5-5-14, dated 5-5-14.
Well, the plan, but Eileen, Eileen has the same document going back to 2001.
But we had, we had a presentation in February of 14.
Okay, so where are you going with this?
Well, I'm, 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 I don't know, I mean, I see these numbers and I see this number and I have a hard time with it.
Right, well, I explained to you that when that was done, we didn't have a levy for those projects. We didn't know if it was coming out of Fund 41. So it was a way to include it in a three-year plan that was manageable for the school district at the time. At the time that plan was also created, the board was under-leveing and not, you know, levy. So to put something in there that we don't have funds for doesn't make sense either. So, you know, it's, it's getting the project in front of the board, getting the information out there, hey, look, we're looking at this, it needs to be done. Um, in 15, 16, when we start talking about the budget, let's say this referendum wasn't on the table. Then at that time, we could have the discussion, go dig deeper into the scope, find out what we can do and then get a project scope going forward.
Well, I, I guess in the future, I would, I would appreciate the full scope because I would, like I say, I was under the assumption and we talked about this, that I didn't realize that there was more phases and 1.5 million more dollars to be spent on this project. So, very concerned about that and, and I'm not.
For not being clear.
Pardon?
I apologize for not.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's a huge item. There's no doubt.
Trying to do what he could do with the money he had, might still have to do that.
And then Matt, did you make a distinction between the wall and the windows in the old plan?
Well, again, the scope wasn't.
Right, you know.
So, I mean, that would depend on what we had available at the time to do the project.
That might account for some of the difference in cost too, if you talk curtain wall versus curtain wall and windows.
Versus whatever.
Well, then, then I'm really disappointed, and I'm really disappointed because what are you telling me on this document then? That 200 bucks, 200,000 is, okay, I'll stop. But I'm very disappointed because what you just say now is then this information you gave us is worthless.
Can I jump in just for a second?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, feel free.
Remember, when there was no referendum on the table, that's when we were looking at the performance contracting Act 32 for energy efficiency stuff. And he might have been, I noted, I heard you mention the 2 million on the third year. I don't, I didn't bring my three-ring binders, sorry. So, I mean, I don't want to leave Matt hanging out there, um, because that, I mean, we actually brought the people in to do a presentation to the board and I honestly don't remember what the numbers were at that point in time. But they were trying to identify all the energy efficiency things and the envelope was one of them. Um, and I don't know what number they came up with and, and we certainly could do a better job of being clear if it needed a different format, we can always do that. And, um, I know Matt's more than willing to do that too.
And again, I didn't, I, I, I never changed the numbers in that plan since, you know, since the time it was, you know, submitted and handed to you guys. So, you know, I kept it, I kept it as is, you know, as the plan, you know, again, I apologize if the clarity isn't there, but when you're working in a three-year plan, it's, you know, it's a living document. We're having finance committee meetings monthly. There would have been plenty of time to have completely fleshed out any scope and direction for that project. You know, if we, if, if we go that way, if, if the project still doesn't get done, you know, Quinn, you can still expect to have the discussion for the 15, 16 budget year as far as what can we do there to improve the exterior walls? Maybe we start at the cafeteria here at the high school because of the, you know, the issues that we have in the cafeteria. But, you know, we would have to, you know, work that out at the finance committee.
This page from Performance Services, you put in your two, right?
Yes.
And it, and this one, it's 1-6, I don't know what it is on now, but what did you guys have it at?
Right, when, right, when they, when they partnered with us to put those numbers together, it was important to get a more accurate number on that piece and include it in that in case the board wanted to go on the route of Act 32.
But I, my point saying this was, there's been, um, there's a lot of different numbers across the board, um, with, like you're saying, 200 here, 200 this year, 200 that year. And there sits the 1.6, um, I think.
What we're asking for, what we're asking for there in that document is a three-year, what can we get done within this budget number, Quinn? That's what, that's about, that is not every be-all and-all district need. It never was intended to be that. It would be nice to have that, I think we should have that. So we know what else is out there, are, are there other needs? And we don't really have a complete facility, you probably do, but we, the board hasn't looked at the overall district facility needs and we should.
Right, but you, you know.
Put that on as a feature.
Right, of course, but you know, it, it's the three-year plan that, you know, I put together addressing the needs that I felt were the most important.
He does that and I remember having to go after Matt and say, Matt, put this, this and this on the bottom. He didn't put any of that in. I had to go, remember, we're having this conversation.
I just wanted to be consistent with this.
I want this document to show at least the big things the board's trying to address.
Right.
Even though we didn't know when they were going to get addressed. So that is a, that is a document that is tough to work with, but that's how I understood it was working for us. But going back to the issue now, what do we do now? Do we want to address the 1.4 million or do we want to wait as part of an overall facilities study and visionary? Look at the building.
I mean, I can.
That's what's on the table right now.
Right, because as with any maintenance plan, we can, you know, load up, we can front-load the plan with as many projects every year, you know, because there's, there's needs throughout the district. And so, you know, maybe it's too, maybe, maybe the plan was too conservative in its approach or in, or its, its concept. But, um, we can certainly, you know, move forward with that with the finance team.
That was all we had to spend in that document, Quinn, and that's what we were asking.
Oh, I don't, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that.
There was this document and, but at the same time, running, you know, simultaneously with this, we were also looking at the energy efficiency projects.
Right, things we couldn't fund.
Yes.
Out of the operating budget.
Fun out of operating through the.
We started looking at that.
We were looking at revenue limit exemption.
And that's when we were looking at it.
Yep, yep.
So, the need was there, it just wasn't on that document because that need, that, those needs couldn't be met through the operational. Is how I, I'm understanding it.
Right.
It wasn't like we weren't having those other conversations on the side.
Correct, unless.
About doing the things that we need to do, but we couldn't fund.
Correct, I mean, the board in that sense would need a three-year funding strategy to fund projects, you know, if I was to put, you know, a million in this year and 2 million in the next year. Then you'd have to be levying for that money into Fund 41. Then you'd have a three-year plan for levying dollars into that plan that we could use to pay for the projects.
Well, that's the question on the table. We don't have that option to levy for those kinds of dollars.
Right, exactly.
We just, I mean, it's tricky because we don't, we can't just raise our budget to put these capital needs in the operating budget. So that's the question on the table. Do we want to put any of these projects in a question? I think it was suggested maybe, no, I think you were mentioning the weight room. Do we want a third question here? Do we want to wait on these projects? What should we do with these energy projects? I was willing to put a couple of million on, I forget what was it, 2.3? Back up a slide, what was the number? I know, I was willing to look at possibly adding a 2.3 million, which is still below, the survey range was 2.3 to 3.5. Um, we're below that, so it's possible, and we're below on the pool. And actually, energy got a higher vote than the pool.
Yes, it did.
So I would be willing to entertain a small portion of this energy to go now because it makes sense to fund brick and mortar out of a bond issuing. I would be willing to do some of those, pulling out the boilers because the boilers are working that. If something happens, we can address those later. They're working and Matt does a great job with those.
We can address them later.
We can address those later. Well, we will address this stuff at some point, you have to. Uh, but that was what I was thinking we should at least think about and then maybe we stick with just the pool. But then how do we, I'm glad you're bringing up the operating budget there, Quinn, and how limited it is.
So you, you're suggesting to attach it to the pool?
And make it a high school, yes, the energy had more support than the pool in the survey.
Well, if, if we put 2.3, then we're asking total amount, 29.4, so everybody knows. HCE, pool and energy. 22.5, 4.6 and 2.3, 29.4.
Yep, that's what I got. That's just a.
So everybody knows that, that's the number we're looking at.
Can we take 700,000 off? Well, I was saving the Fund 41 for energy efficiency, we still, we do have.
Quinn, let's just, just, can I just remind the board too?
John, I'll get you in just a second.
The whole reason why we have the Fund 41 account is because of the over levy in previous years. That is now gone, so.
The over levy.
Or to levy extra, additional dollars for the capital projects.
For the capital projects.
Some of that money is actually held over from the middle school project as well that we finished in 2008.
Um, John, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, um, doing the math, uh, I did have a question as when you add up the whole energy project, um, including the boilers, it looks like it comes out to 3.335 million and I don't know why the, I may have missed why the referendum is only 2.3 million.
We took the boilers out.
Eight and 12.
No, no, before that, before that, the whole energy project was 3,335,000. If you add up the low column, if you add up the low column on, um, on, uh, let's see, slide 23, page 23. Um, it ends up at 3.335 million and change. And I don't know why the referendum was 2.3.
Taking out eight, number eight and number 12, John.
That's right.
No, well, that, that's why the referendum ended up at 2.3.
What's eight and 12 again?
It looks like it's still included on the slide and the next slide indicates 2.3.
Yeah, no, I think we took them out.
We did, I was just.
Okay, so that, that's not clarified on the slide.
You're right, you're correct.
In any case, so taking out, taking out the boilers and looking at, um, if you look at, uh, the 2.3 minus the boilers, you're still looking at adding, uh, 1.9 million to this thing, which ups the pool project by 41%. And, I mean, you know, I feel like a broken record, but I'm going to say it again. I think if you start tacking onto the pool, you lose everything. I, uh, I do understand after talking to Matt a few times about it, that he was answering two different questions. Uh, the question was a three-year plan in which he produced and then the question was if you were to do a referendum. So he produced by reaching further into his priorities. So at least that was my understanding. So my big confusion, I talked to him a couple of times about was, uh, why, you know, 200,000 a year for a couple of years for panels versus on the referendum, 1.9 million? And I guess it involves doing much more of the school. I, my, uh, what I'm in favor of is, um, letting the pool stand alone, not asking a third question. And, uh, for now, we press forward with the three-year plan that he's spent a lot of time putting together. And, uh, and, um, as, you know, if, as, as time, money and, and, uh, you know, the, uh, the public permits, then we, uh, um, may need to reach deeper into the priority bucket. But, uh, standalone pool referendum and, and let's press forward with the three-year plan.
Okay, how about you guys down there and let's listen to everybody. Jonathan, do you think we should move forward with any of the energy, none of it? Just go with the two projects, what are your thoughts?
Which doesn't include air conditioning in the high school.
Right.
Which doesn't?
If we do just the pool.
If we just do the pool.
Right.
And just.
Doesn't include air conditioning.
2.3 does though.
The 2.3 would give us that air conditioning and it would get us those walls fixed in the high school.
And you can't do any of that under 41.
We'd have to levy, you'd have to levy for that.
We don't have enough.
So, I mean, so at the annual meeting, right?
We'd have to levy.
I mean, maybe a Doug question, if they wanted to increase Fund 41?
We don't have.
No, but we can't use the existing funds in 41, we can't use that for any of these?
Well, yeah.
No, yeah.
Certainly, you can.
There just isn't enough.
There just isn't enough money in the fund.
Well, that's what I'm saying, can't we reduce that? We didn't reduce Hill's Corners. And the reason I said that was, was because we might not get both of these through.
So.
But can we reduce this 2,300 by 700,000 and add that to the pool cost?
But then what do we do with existing deferred maintenance?
That was the whole reason.
No, I'm not giving support for that.
Jonathan?
No, I know where you're coming from. I, I, I just think we're backing ourselves into a corner by doing that.
So do you think we should go with?
If we're talking about 100,000 or 200,000 maybe, but you're talking about 700,000, I think we're going to end up in a pinch later. That's going to come back to how it does.
You don't, you start to play games with numbers like that, and not on purpose, it's just that you shift it around and it starts to become hard to track.
I don't think you call it playing games, I mean, it's, it's.
I don't mean it that way.
Trying to earmark the money for something.
I mean, it's there, so I'm feeling like we should use it to try to reduce the levy unless we really don't think we, unless we really think we have to have it for some other deferred maintenance.
So I'm hearing Jonathan say at the moment, you'd like to see us do some of this or all of this, the 2.3? You can think about it.
No, I think, I, I mean, I think it needs to be done. I, I think it needs to be done. And if we're talking about what people have said they want fixed the most, everything we hear is air conditioning in the high school gym. So, I think if we go through without that, as soon as they vote, it's going to be wise and it's done.
And, and, and Mr. Brzezowski at the financing facility meeting told us how bad that curtain wall is.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, and, and I know, I mean, now, my daughter comes home and tells me it's freezing on one side of the place, you know? I say, put a sweater on. We do that in the house, we do in our house, but when he says that you can put your wave your hand there and you can see it, it's a little different issue, you know? I mean, I, I've, I've, I've talked to a fair amount of people, I've emailed a fair amount of people and every one of them said they're willing to pay for good quality product. And I, I, I think we need, I think we need to put this with the pool as a high school improvement, as exactly what it is, and let it, let it go. You know, ultimately, if our district residents don't have a vision, it's going to cost us more money if it doesn't pass. Because things don't get cheaper and, and the rates go up.
You're absolutely right.
You know, death and taxes.
You're right.
So, let's give them, let's give our, let's give our people the chance to say yes or no, you know? Okay, we had two people on the board that iffy about the pool. Well, here you go, put it on there and let's see what they do. You know?
Okay, Nancy, I'm seeing you shake your head, are you in support of that?
Yes, I'm in support of having a high school referendum question.
High school referendum with pool and energy updates to the tune of 2.3 million, pulling out, was it the boilers?
There's a tune of 6.9 million.
Total pool in this, but you're right.
6.9.
Pulling out options eight and 12.
And go back, I'm sorry, I don't have those. Back to power point up, what does that 2.3 get you?
It's just the curtain wall and the air conditioning.
The curtain wall, that's it.
Curtain wall.
What more do you have for 2.3 million?
The curtain wall is, I just wanted to be clear.
And the ventilation.
Okay.
The ventilation.
350, okay, got it. And the windows. Okay, so that comes to.
That's not my, the ventilation is not right.
2.3, it's less.
Right, we spoke, I don't, I, maybe I missed what they're doing.
2.3, 2.3, okay.
It does not include the ventilation. It, we eliminated number eight and number 12, right?
I was going to say, I thought we did.
We are accepting the one and 13, project number.
Eight and 13 from the sheet are, is that the temp spec vertical units for the?
No, no.
We did one and 13.
It's one and 13, it's not eight and.
Oh, one is the, one is the, uh, air conditioning, yeah.
So we're not even getting the ventilation, right?
If you leave it out, you wouldn't be.
Number eight.
Shannon told us.
No, it's number eight, the ventilation.
Oh, um, yes, yes it is, yes it is.
So eight, okay, so we're not getting the ventilation.
Right, but you said we could do that, right?
Yeah, well, we would.
If we were to do 12, we had to do eight. Is that what you said? Or you up?
Yeah, I mean, otherwise we would have to.
If you do eight, you have to do 13.
Right.
Eight and 13 were connected.
If you do eight, you have to do 13, you can do 13.
Okay, thank you, Ryan.
Would it be easier to do eight while we're doing 13 or will it cost us more down the road to do eight after we've done 13?
No, you said if you do eight, you have to do 13.
No, no, but that's not what I asked.
You're saying do 13, can we?
If we do 13 now and if we're doing late eight down the road, will it cost us more?
Yeah, there'll be some, some additional cost, yeah, just.
Not just cost, but I mean, we're going to have to redo work. Since 13 has to be done if we're doing eight, why?
Placing the ventilators with that storefront.
You know, if the units change size, we'd be putting in indoor fans or something like that, but that wouldn't be. Yeah, it'd be many costs.
I mean, I'm just trying to think of people's concerns to say what, what would it be? So trying to answer those questions now.
Right, how it would look is if we left, if we left the, if we left eight out of the project and what we would be ending up, we'd end up with new walls, nice insulation, good glass, but we'd be using our old 1960s heating system to still supply air to the classroom. And so the whole concept is if you're going to do the wall, you can incorporate an outside air grill into the wall, you can have a vertical classroom unit, that's going to, you know, be a permanent solution to those classrooms and provide proper, you know, temperature and humidity control for, for the high school classrooms. for their, for the high school classrooms.
I'm sorry.
So if we're truly just pull, pulling out the boilers, the dollar amount is three million?
Oh.
No, two point six, I'm sorry. No? No, three million.
You're proposing we go to three mil? So instead of twenty-nine point four, we had thirty. Oh, my gosh.
What I'm, no, I'm, I'm saying, let's make sure we all know what we're getting and we're on the same page and understanding what we're talking about. Cause we're saying ventilation, no we're not, but we are. Let's make sure we understand what we're talking about and what we're proposing.
Okay, right now, the only two point three includes line.
One and thirteen, so air conditioning and then the curtain walls with windows.
Right. And we can address those other issues at another time.
Well, of course. But we're saying the ventilation. But we're saying the ventilation piece though, that's a key component, if I'm hearing it correctly, that's a key component that needs to be done.
Could you, Shannon, speak to that and Ryan? I think you guys had thought that could still work. And I don't think Matt was even in the room when we did that. What was the reason you thought that could work?
You can do, you can do the curtain wall without touching those unit ventilators. They can stay in there and continue to work. But if you take out those unit ventilators, you have to do the curtain wall then. So that's the trade-off, that if you wanna replace those unit ventilators, you gotta do your curtain wall work.
And so what do we gain by doing the curtain walls and not ventilators?
Eliminating holes in the building essentially.
Okay.
And you gain energy efficiency by having a better insulated wall system on the outside of your building. So you will gain energy efficiency and save money in your heating costs and your cooling costs.
And we can update those units later.
You could, and the cost of that seven hundred thousand mark had a very, seven seventy to a good point is that, I think Eileen's magic number of seven hundred thousand, you know? Ideally, you know, not ideally, I can't speak for your board, but this work is everything that your fund, you've spoken about covers. Or is intended to cover, so.
And there are other energy options for funding, right? There's other things you can do to fund energy. What was the other?
Act thirty-one?
Right.
Yes.
So we could really wait on that, but get the brick and mortar done.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two, yeah.
What would thirty-one give you? It was close though, I was happy with it. Quinn had a good point though about the performance contracting. If you, if you don't do the seven hundred thousand right now, it doesn't mean you're not gonna end up doing it with the project because of the amount of the contingencies for different things. And the other option is Fund Forty-One, um, you know, that magic seven hundred thousand. See, one of the reasons Act thirty-two is there is cause they give you, um, performance guarantees theoretically, that you're gonna save this much in energy over, um, a period of time. Whether you actually get that in through Act thirty-two, you're also gonna get that when they do it. It's just it's not as formalized. So there's not a contract that says you're gonna get this. But when you use Act thirty-two, you do the same, same work, but then they just figure out what's the payback over twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. And it's never a hundred percent payback, it might not even be a twenty-five percent payback, but you're gonna recognize energy efficiency stuff. I guess where I was going with all this babbling was you could still do the two point three. And as we're getting into the project, if you decide, yeah, let's do the ventilators, um, you can, you know, we can have that discussion at the, with the whole board or at the finance facilities and say, okay, Doug, after all these things that we identified, we're done with Fund Forty-One, how much is left? And can we get this all done at the same time without, and so it's not using referendum dollars? And it's keeping it at least under that magic number, um.
What magic number?
What magic?
Thirty. You know, so it's twenty-nine point four.
Magic number on the second question.
Okay, so.
Otherwise, we risk getting some done.
Kit brings a, a point there that we're already over on the, on the high, on the elementary. Uh, this is within, this adds a piece. Well, yeah.
Um, it's still below though what the survey, it's all, it's still below what we had suggested on the survey, even when we add in the two point three and the pool.
And, and the ultimate saving grace is the lesser interest rate.
Exactly. If we do it now, brick and mortar, I'm really big on the brick and mortar stuff. Equipment, I think, you know, that's a different story. We should be able to find operating ways to do equipment. But brick and mortar, this is, that is, that is intended to do now. The question wasn't, we're not gonna do it. It would be, do we do that brick and mortar stuff all later? Do we wanna look at a referendum down the road to fund all of this stuff, the rest of this stuff? Do we wanna wait? Uh, I'm seeing, no, we don't.
Well, I think our, I think our chance is now to do referendum, after this, we're on our own to.
For a while, for a while, but at the same time, you can say to your community, we didn't do it all right now. We know we still have other needs. And that's what you say to your community. You say, this is what we're gonna do now, and this is what we might come back to you for later.
And they probably say it in a cold Dean hell.
At the moment, then you're, what you're taking out now, then you better put everything in this that you need now.
I, I totally agree with that.
I was gonna suggest possibly increasing the two point three slightly to include part of that seven hundred thousand. And then we reduce the amount we'd have to fund elsewhere, if we don't wanna go too far, but we're still going over the six point nine.
I mean, go ahead.
Yeah, I had.
We would, yes.
We had twenty-nine point four.
Can I just point out one other thing that I don't know if it's clear, I just listened to the conversation tonight about Act thirty-two. Okay, there's two ways to levy for Act thirty-two. You could levy the full two point three million in one year, but like you said, you can't afford that, right? You're not gonna increase your tax levy for two point three million, or even a million, or even five hundred thousand, it's too expensive. So the other option you have is to borrow the two point three million separate from the referendum and levy the tax for the debt payment under Act thirty-two. It's the same tax impact, it would look exactly the same from a tax impact standpoint, but you'd be pulling out the two point three and not going to referendum for the two point three.
But doesn't that still then come through our operating budget?
No.
But we do have to prove it, we. It's under the.
Act thirty-two allows you to levy a tax above the revenue limit.
But our community still has to approve that at the annual meeting.
No. All you have to do is go through a thirty-day petition period like you did for this meeting project. But keep in mind, there's a level of confusion that you're gonna have. And it could be political too, because you're, are you being fully transparent? You're telling us, you're, you're coming to us for all these projects, but yet you're borrowing two point three million over here. You know, that's, there's a component of transparency, we've dealt with this so many times. Where if you're going to referendum for a bunch of projects.
Put it all in there.
Yeah, put it all in there. Don't say, oh, we're gonna ask you for this, but we can borrow two point three million over here. Same tax impact, same, same tax impact. Cause both of them are levied above the revenue limit.
Well, that's it. I mean, we're, we're giving them the option to choose, we're not doing that.
Yeah, that, that's why I think Act thirty-two might be, in this case, I'd take it off the table because.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stephanie, comments?
Okay.
What do you think?
So bottom line, I would like two referendum questions. I, HCE is a must.
Yep, we're, we're done.
And how we structure the second one, I could go either way.
Okay.
I could, whether we just stick with just the pool or we take the pool and the energy projects.
Okay, up to two point three?
Because again, hmm, we wouldn't be talking about it if it wasn't a need, it's a matter of priority.
Okay.
So I could go either way.
Quinn, let's just kinda do a quick, where are we at?
I'm for the, uh, pool and energy, four point six and two point three.
Okay.
As one question.
Eileen?
I would say, I mean, I, it seems like we need to do these energy efficiencies. And then you, we're not gonna be able to go back out to referendum the next year, you know, the next year. I mean, people are gonna say, listen, I'm tapped out. So we need to address it all now. So keep it as, I guess, the pool and the energy efficiency. Energy efficiency, I just wanna say, did rank higher than the pool, so I'm thinking that it should not necessarily be detrimental to the success of passing it for the pool.
All right, um, Nancy, agreed, agreed? Jonathan?
Um, yeah, I think, um, I think we do seven point four towards the high school. And, um, twenty-two point five, we're at twenty-nine point nine, if my math works. And then we have that extra five hundred thousand built in to go towards number eight, if we choose, and.
Go back. Four point six for the pool and how much for the high school? Two point three, now you're adding something to that.
Yeah, it's a total seven point four for the high school, for pool and energy, seven point four. So that's what, two point, uh, two point eight for energy?
You added five, okay.
To cover part of the number eight. I'm just, it's just an idea, to cover part of that.
Okay, so you're fine with doing Hills Corners is one of the questions, and then the second question is pool and energy.
Yes.
But you're taking the pool and energy question and you're taking the energy portion and expanding it past the two point six.
Yeah, he's adding, he's adding part of the seven hundred thousand.
Part of number eight for the, um, ventilation.
Five hundred thousand of the seven hundred thousand.
Trying to lessen that gap, instead of saying let's use all of whatever, let's lessen that gap.
And it comes to how much total? Twenty-nine point?
Right.
I don't, I don't think I wanna go there. What about you guys?
I think you're splitting hairs when you're taking seven hundred thousand and I, I think, I think you're slicing it and dicing it a little too finely.
Yeah.
Cause I think the overall impact for that portion is relatively small.
So leave it in or take it out?
But then you're, you're over thirty million then.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I say leave it at, 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 without that, hope, they have told us that we can do the project and we can gain energy efficiency by doing the curtain wall. If by, if by chance we do gain monies, uh, through, uh, efficiencies, um, we have it, otherwise, uh, I'm, I'm okay with all that. And I think that, uh, Kit makes a good point to keep that two, at six point nine. We're within our, our, uh, target goal and, uh,
Is that okay, Jonathan? We'll stick with two point three? Okay, John?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm sure you guys will chuckle, but, uh, I hate to be the stick in the mud, but, I mean, I thought that the pool would, would be better standing alone rather than adding a million dollar.
Of course.
Uh, weight room to the referendum. I still think that, looking at the priorities, I think the pool, uh, stands a better chance at passing than if we raise it up fifty percent of its projected cost to a six point nine million dollar referendum. I think that, uh, I still think it needs to stand on its own. I think, uh, if we try to ask too much, um, of folks, that we're likely to get nothing, um, and the district needs to, uh, I think the district needs to, uh, make some, make some progress with, uh, the, the HCE and the pool for sure. And the other stuff, again, there's plans in place to keep that stuff moving along.
We're not adding the weight room, I just wanted to be clear about that.
Oh, I understand that, but my, I, I can't, I can't be, I'm a consistent, more of a consistent type of a, a person and, you know, I, I can't say no to the weight room at a million dollars, uh, which would reduce the pool's chances of passing, and then say yes to, uh, adding two point three million to the pool and think that by the same reasoning, it might not suffer a chance at passing, I, 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 at, at not passing, I don't know. I think that we, uh, I still think we need to let the energy, um, thing, uh, march along with, uh, you know, with, uh, Matt's, uh, original year plan, modified as necessary, and try to do these other things on their own.
Well, could you live with it? Because we've got six out of seven that would like to just at least add in the brick and mortar to, the two point three million and just add in the, um, what we think are the priorities really, the, um, air conditioning at the high school? In the gym.
If we're changing, if we're changing the, uh, well, that doesn't just take care of the air conditioning in gym. That, uh, that adds, uh, that adds, you know, the, the one point nine.
Yeah, the curtain wall. I'm sorry, the curtain wall. The curtain wall and the air conditioning, I didn't say that right, yeah.
So what I'm saying is, I think that if we wanna get something passed, I think this is the wrong thing to ask.
Um, there's some disagreement here. Would you be able to live with it is what I'm asking you. Could you live with it and, and, uh, support it? Because we'd like to move forward with the two point three.
Well, I mean, it, uh, you know, it is, there is, I mean, it's a, it's a vote of seven, so, uh, I'm certainly not gonna talk stuff down, but I don't, I don't plan on selling or talking down, I plan on, you know, moving it up there as the way it is.
That's what's important.
I think the, the thing that we've mentioned.
Appreciate that.
Couple of times, and to keep in mind is sixty-four percent of all residents said they supported.
Yeah, the pool, we think, we feel. We feel that we would be more comfortable adding just a couple of pieces of the energy products because of the sixty-four percent, was that it?
Sixty-four percent of all residents voted.
Resident, of all residents supporting it, John. So I, I hear what you're saying. If I think, if I thought it was a risk, I wouldn't support it either, but.
Yes, but it's too simplistic of a view, I think, on, uh, on, uh, how to look at the survey, because let's face it. You know, easily, you could, you could just as easily say, mm, more people were in favor for the, for the cheapest, uh, the cheapest thing on there. So if they felt like, well, I should pick something to not, you know, be negative about it, then they pick the cheapest thing. So you don't really know why people picked it, I just think that we're maybe, uh, simplifying it too much.
Okay.
I get that. Now, would you, again, you'd, but you'd be able to support it, because we'd really like to move forward. I'm hearing a lot of support here with the two point three. And you said yes, right? You'd, you'd be okay with that. You could live with it, in other words.
I didn't exactly, I, well, I said it doesn't matter if I live with it or not, you know, I.
It does matter.
It needs to, it needs to ride on its own merits, but I think, I mean, I'm like.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of adding two point three million dollars on a pool project, because I don't think that that will enhance the pool project's opportunity to pass.
Well, let's, let's do, let's take, uh, let's see, do we do two votes then? One for Hills Corners and one for, um, um, question two, which would have.
One.
We'll have two different votes. Is that okay, John? We'll move ahead with, um, a vote for Hills Corners, and I would entertain a motion then to direct administration to craft referendum questions, correct? What do you call them? What's the fact?
Questions.
Referendum ques- res- resolutions to bring to the board on the nineteenth that would support the language you had up there for Hills Corners at twenty-two point five million. Okay, it's been, who moved?
referendum amount of twenty-two point five.
Twenty-two point five million for a new Hills Corners at the same site, okay. And you're moving that? Oh, Quinn moved it second, and Stephanie seconded it. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Aye, okay, seeing none, no opposition, motion carries. Hills Corners is going. We will ask our community if they would like to build a new Hills Corners, cause ultimately it is up to them to make that decision. We're just putting our best foot forward, and that's where we're at. Okay, so then the second question would be, we would be directing administration to come up with a resolution that would, oh, you had a copy, where was it? I liked how that was worded, it was high school. Oh, there it is. It was the high school, um, improvements, it's, yeah. You're going to the end, it was worded pretty well there, right. High school.
Pool and energy.
Pool and energy improvements of six point nine million dollars. And they will craft in that language that that money is only supposed to go to these projects, okay? That's not an open-ended six point nine million. It has to be for the pool and for the, um, what do you call it?
Well, I don't think we're gonna be as specific as using the words like curtain wall.
Well, whatever.
Yeah, no.
Whatever you would recommend to make sure that that goes for energy improvements at the high school. All right, I would.
We could give you some flexibility down the road if, for example, that project scope comes in low.
Right.
There'll be two questions, there'll be two resolutions you'll be adopting. One is to go to referendum on April threes.
Seventh.
Seventh.
Or, actually, three, because we have two questions. So, and then there'll be one resolution for the high, elementary school and one for the, for the other.
Oh, okay.
Three resolutions.
Three resolutions we will have, okay. Did you hear that, John?
What is, what's the?
The first one is to go to referendum, just to put it on the ballot, and then the second one is for the Hills Corners. And then the third one would be for the high school pool and energy projects, not to exceed six point nine million. Do I see, hear a motion? So moved to that effect, it's been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Hey.
Aye.
You approved it, it's been, um, the motion carried?
And I, I'm gonna go with John, I'll just keep the pool separate, I'll be.
John approved, I'm sorry, backing up. Let me go back, okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the high school pool and energy projects at six point nine million. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So that's five, okay? Opposed?
Nay.
A nay.
Two, okay. Uh, motion carries, five to two. On, um, putting two questions out there. And, uh, okay. We've gotten through it.
Don't we still have to do the ones to go to referendum?
Well, you actually adopt the formal like.
We will adopt that formal referendum, okay? All right, so I think we've gotten through old business, A, B, C, and D. All right, thank you everyone. Thank you, thank you. New business. Okay, so that would be, um, we would ask then that the board has moved here to move forward and that we would all hopefully speak with one voice in the future on this subject. Okay, um, six, new business, we have six A. Discuss open enrollment space availability, availability and class size parameters. And Lowell, who's up with that?
Joel's not here today. He's out of town, so, um, but he did, he followed the exact same format that we followed for the past four years. And where we set the limit at twenty-three students for elementary school, um, twenty-five, I believe it is, at middle school and twenty-seven at high school. So in other words, if any, if the average of those class sizes are above that, we don't ask for additional open enrollment in there. And then Luann had asked for the, the sheet that was in front of you tonight, looks like this with a yellow and, uh, that graph had been shown to some committee at some point. I don't remember which one where, to be honest. Um, but basically that tells you what our breakdown of students is for the current school year. Well, that was as of three twenty-seven fourteen. So, you know, the what percentage of our kids come from Franklin, ten percent, uh, Greenfield, thirty-four percent, Hills Corners, thirty-nine percent. So total residents were eighty-four percent and non-residents, i.e. open enrollment, two-twenty, um, was sixteen percent. And then if, just, uh, you can read through the open enrollment considerations. That was updated for today's time and dollar amounts. And at, the open enrollment amount actually went down from two thousand eleven when it was sixty-seven ninety-six. But sixty-seven eighty-five is the current one. If you did the, the math on it, it brings in about two point seven additional million dollars to our district, which is, if you'll remember Lisa's presentation, our tax levy is sixteen something. So it, it's roughly seventeen percent of our tax levy. So we would be increasing our, our burden on our taxpayers by that, that amount if we didn't do it. Academically, I have lots of reasons why it's a positive thing because it allows us to keep, um, choices. I think when you look at, and we, I think the board made the commitment about four years ago after Gary did his presentation on, when Act Ten was passed. We've been, we've prospered academically as a result while still being able to under levy. We would never have been able to under levy and provide increases for our employees without that. And we'd never, except for once when it was on purpose. Can I remember in my, my time here when we said we have twenty-seven kids in a fifth grade and twenty-eight kids in the fifth grade? And, um, a distinguished board member said, let's increase the number of open enrollment kids so we have a third section to reduce the class size. Which we did. It brought in the revenue to pay for the teacher. We had the classroom because we had three sections at every other grade. So there's no, there was no increase to the budget other than, and we already had the textbooks and, uh, the equipment. So, um, so was it profitable? Extremely. And again, this is, this is not, you're, you're not voting on this tonight, um, so you'll be able to grow Joel a little bit more in, in a week, which I would anticipate.
Well, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, and then you can take them down if you ask Joel, okay? The middle school, okay? So, and what we were given last year was, and maybe it was a typo, but last year we had six sections of twenty-eight for a hundred and sixty-eight per grade. On this sheet, you're now saying seven sections of twenty-seven for a hundred and eighty-nine. So all of a sudden now you've got, what, like one more section of each?
I'm not sure if, if we reduced.
Do we have room for that? I mean,
We reduced class sizes by adding one more class a day that each teacher taught. So that's where they're taking the seven sections.
Okay, so then instead of having like a hundred and sixty-eight per grade, now we'll have a hundred and eighty-nine? I mean, is that going to work in, I mean, does that? I mean, is it, I mean, money-wise it works, but in, you know, physical space and reality, I mean, is it going, is it going to work?
If you stay at twenty-seven, it's doable, but, you know, we always have kids who move in. Getting to thirty-two, thirty-four, that's pretty big, um, that was.
Did we get that this year? Do we have that?
Oh, we had kids who moved in.
So we, we exceeded, do we have class sizes that are higher than the twenty-eight?
A, a few, yes. But some of that's driven by, um, elective choices as well.
It's, it's hard to balance the classes exactly because you'll have, depending on what hour the electors offered, you might have, um, a total of fifty-five kids that want a class, but thirty-five have to take it this hour because they're in this elective at, at the other hour. And so you only have then the twenty or twenty-five, whatever my math is, in that other section. So you do sometimes bump over thirty, I think, did we copy the whole board on that conversation? I don't remember. But, you know, like Lynn said, it's, um, there are, there are some, but there's substantially, because we tried to reduce the class sizes by adding an extra section, um, I've, my hats off to the middle school teachers for stepping up to the plate. They didn't riot. They took the extra class and we were able to reduce some class sizes that way. We can certainly adjust these numbers, you know, especially for the first go-around until Lynn says, okay, I'm comfortable it's June, whatever, that we're not going to have a mass influx at this grade level. And then we can bring it back up to that twenty-seven.
Okay, but Lynn, something you said, and maybe it's just because it's ten after nine, but you had said that the teachers picked up an extra class, right? Okay, so you didn't just suddenly expand the instructional time at the middle school to stick another hour in the day. So how is that working schedule-wise? Did you have to get rid of a time slot and fill it with something else? How'd that work?
Teachers are teaching at, you know, if I'm a math teacher, I'm teaching additional math section. We're, we're running more of a junior high schedule than a middle school schedule, um, to make that happen. We're, um, you know, we have more of a house concept and teachers are clustered together by grade level in the houses or the teams and we don't have that so much.
So how is, I guess, one of the things that I appreciated as a parent at the middle school was that targeted teaching time. So that there was, there was time set into every day to get extra help or to do interventions and, and to be proactive in that way. So if I'm understanding this correctly, targeted teaching, that time slot doesn't exist anymore in the instructional day? So how is that affecting the instruction?
I was actually just looking at data before, from feedback from the teachers before came and they, they are feeling a pinch. Their, their kids are, are missing it, um, teachers are missing it to, to have the ability to, um, you know, meet with kids if they need a little extra help, if they need to make a test. That's definitely been a huge, uh,
Yeah.
comment.
I, I guess that, that bothers me a little bit. Okay, let's not say a little. It bothers me a lot. Just because of the age of the kids and because of the transition that they're going through, through middle school. Not to have that kind of support because when, when the concept was in place, it worked really well for wide variety of kids.
Let me, let me tell you the rest of the story. It, the, there are still, they don't, it's not study halls, but you still have that, that section of time available every single hour.
Every child has an academic support, which is similar to a study hall. However, the, with targeted teaching, if I was a seventh grade student, all of my seventh grade core teachers were available for, um, you know, to go take a test if I was sick yesterday and there was a tested in language arts or, um, you know, every, all of those core teachers were available at the same time and all seventh grade students had targeted teaching at the same time. That's not the case this year. Um, you know, if I'm a seventh grade student and you're a seventh grade student, we, you can have your academic support first hour and I can have mine third hour. So, um, kids aren't able to access their teachers unless by the luck of their schedule, they have the same academic support as prep time, their teacher as prep.
The focus was on academic achievement stuff and period. That was to reduce the, the class sizes. We've had, and we've shown that the academic achievement, um, every single year, saying what the kids are scoring at the elementary school, the same kids, what they're scoring at the middle school, and then the same kids, what they're scoring at the high school. So we wanted to do, it, there's a couple, there's a two-pronged approach to improving the academics. One was the, um, the behavioral program that they implemented, which has been really successful. Because as Lynn talks with the rest of us, we agree that, um, you know, if, if kids are happy to be there and they're, they're cooperating more with the teachers, they're going to learn more.
Yeah.
You know, so that's the, that type of incentive is good. The schedule that was in place wasn't having, for whatever reason, a positive impact on the academics. This schedule has, you know, as you researched it, gave more, it gave a smaller number of kids to a core teacher by having them teach an extra section. When you're at the high school, you do it by department and, and we were supposed to, and, and I don't know how it's worked with, with Brian and this is the first year we've tried it. So I'm sure Brian can make some changes to the schedule as we go forward. But the goal was to have it by department so that if you have, um, issues with science, you can, you know, you'll have a science teacher, social studies, social studies teacher. So, and, and that's not the, the, I mean, it's not the discussion of open enrollment, but I'd be happy to have a long discussion.
I was going to say, I think we need to bring it back to the discussion of open enrollment tonight and these numbers.
My concern is that if we're pumping too many into that middle school level and if we expanded it that much, asking teachers to pick up an extra section, you know, what, how is that affecting overall if the kids need the one-on-one time with their specific teacher? That's just a concern I have at that level.
Right, I mean, it certainly falls in discussion when, when it's right on our open enrollment sheet that we went from six sections of twenty-eight to seven sections of twenty-seven. So it, it, you know, the, the discussion certainly seems that.
Yeah, any other questions?
Well, well, okay, so I'm not, um, I'm not thrilled with that twenty-nine to the eighth grade. Um, when we do that, I'd like to see that reduced to nineteen or twenty for, for a couple of reasons. First of all, when we do this, now that particular grade, which is, is going to be forty-five percent non-residents if we add twenty-nine. The other thought I have with this eighth grade, by adding twenty-nine in eighth grade, when you roll them up to grade nine, that's, that's going to put us, I have a train of thought here. So we add twenty-nine, you've got a hundred and sixty plus twenty-nine brings you up to one eighty-nine. You know, when we go into ninth grade, last year we brought in like fifteen resident students, you know, because there's some that transfer maybe from one of the parochial schools or move into the district. We don't know that. So you're going to have one eighty-nine. If, if you get fifteen, then you're starting to get up over that two hundred again too. So I don't know if we really need to put, I don't know if we really need to add twenty-nine into this grade eight, even if we stay with this seventh. I, I don't, I don't know why we need seven such as twice.
You ready for this one? I agree with you. I agree with you a hundred percent. And because we've tried as a board.
You're just late, don't argue.
No, we, if you always try to get them at sixth grade, rather than waiting to, to bring them in at eighth grade when, you know, the other kids will all been through the program. So I, you know, I'm not even sure the nineteen or twenty is, is low enough. If it, if we're talking about next year at grade nine, you know, I think starting out as freshmen, that's the time to move. Starting out at sixth grade, that's time to move. Eighth grade, not so much. Eleventh through twelfth, mm, no. I was just seeing what Joel put down, but thankfully.
Why is it being suggested that we accept twenty-nine?
No, no, he's just used the same formula we used over the past couple of years. And it's a, it's the start because, I, you know, Eileen's suggestion is good. If you have a different, you know, another, uh, suggestion, a different grade level. My only request would be that you'd leave at least one as a placeholder because then if we do get a reduction in that grade level, we can bring kids in, in, in the summertime, you know, when, when we get to June, July. I mean, our elementaries are very good at it. They're very adamant. Don't add any kindergartners until we get to, which is okay because we got a big list. So there are parents that wait till the last minute to register their kids.
Because it's better to have at least one, right? Because if we tell the state we're not accepting any open enrollment, that's.
And we always lose that appeal then too.
Yeah, so at least one for a placeholder, right?
Yeah.
In every grade?
Um, we don't have to do tests at eleven and twelve, but yeah. I agree with Stephanie.
Okay. Any other questions? The, I just have, my question is, does an administrative team look this all over before this is final?
We always did. Did Joel do it this time? I don't know.
Okay, make sure he does before it comes back.
We'll put it in our.
So that all those folks are not there. As long as you're running it through administrative team, the board should not be able, have to get involved like this. As long as your team is looking at it and these teachers are looking at it, it'll come out right.
But I do, I do appreciate the suggestions, honestly.
No, I know and I appreciate the detail. John, sorry.
Yeah, my, my concern is, you know, from a, from a larger picture. I mean, I understand the economic return on it, but it just seems like, I mean, we understand that smaller, the benefit of smaller class sizes, uh, can have. Uh, I couldn't quite hear everything Lynn was saying. I apologize, uh, about, you know, targeted teaching and, uh, and that kind of thing. The teachers I've talked to, uh, did mention, uh, the, 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 uh, the difference with the lack of targeted teaching, I think it was this year, but also lack of preparation time. So, I mean, I'm just concerned that, that we're, that we're trading, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of things to try to improve the district and I just don't know that, that this is consistent with that because, uh, you know, we're, we seem to be willing to target an upper end of class size for the sake of money versus trying to adjust the class size to, uh, to an optimum, an optimum point.
Yeah, it wasn't done for the sake of money.
What, what's that? I'm sorry?
The, the, the change in the schedule was absolutely not done for the sake of money. It was for academic achievement.
I'm not, I'm not implying that was. I'm sorry if that came across that way. I'm not, I'm not implying that was. But, uh, the, the net effect is I've heard teachers talk about where their prep time go and, uh, and I've even heard some kids talk about targeted teaching versus the, uh, period they have now. So, uh, but that's, you know, that's an internal thing that, you know, we need, I probably need to learn more about. But the, the bottom line is, I, I think that I'm not in favor when we talk about, you know, how many kids we can add to reach a maximum class size versus, I mean, and, and how much money we make off of it. To me, that's looking at things from my perspective a little backwards compared to, you know, an optimum class size type of discussion.
All right, thank you. Um, any other comments? If not, we'll move to the next agenda item and that would be, uh, first reading of policy four sixty-two, Wisconsin Technical Excellence Scholarship. Thank you to the Policy Committee for moving this forward. Does anyone have any questions or comments? This will come back to the board as a full vote. And as you mentioned, you put this in place and then you keep tweaking it as we go because it's the first time we've had a policy to this effect. And thank you for doing that.
And we want to get it, there's timelines, uh, February fifteenth is the next timeline that we need to, uh, be eligible to get the funding.
Okay, so we have to prove this at the next board meeting. This will come forward.
And I think, just to clarify, the criteria isn't set by us. The criteria was set by the state. So we don't, we're not tweaking that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We'll see how it is, how it would be awarded.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Just, I'm impressed by the speed. Just, I'm impressed by the speed. No, I'm serious, 'cause I handed something to Quinn and Eileen, I think, and.
Got together.
And the committee came together and.
It's working great.
Yeah.
That's how policy, that's, that's the way it should work. Board sets the policy. We keep focused on these things. We keep them up to date all the time.
And we're moving it quickly because of the deadline. We want our students have the opportunity to submit by whatever the deadline is, if February first or February fifteenth. So, you know, we don't want them to miss out, so it's important to move forward on that.
All right, thank you to the Policy Committee. Any other comments? If not, then we'll move to discuss and take possible action on the WSB twenty fifteen resolutions. We typically don't get too involved in this. The person that's our representative, Jonathan, you have to come to convention, but I'm, are you coming to convention? And if not, Eileen said she's going.
Yeah, we kinda talked.
Did you guys figure that out? Okay. So if anybody has any comments, talk to Jonathan or Eileen. How about that?
I don't know. Were there any particular resolutions that anybody wanted to talk to? Did administration have any, I guess my thoughts is, did administration have any feedback? 'Cause usually what we do, do we have a meeting next Monday?
Yes. The one question I would have, they talk about getting exemption to start school earlier than September one. What is our opinion on that? Administrative opinion on it? Is it a factor? Is it because of these courses that they want, that they offer?
It would give us more flexibility on the calendar.
I think it has to be with the reason for those classes. You have to have a certain amount of eleventh and twelfth graders.
Do we have seventy-five percent of our eleventh and twelfth graders enrolled in?
AP and IB programming.
And AP? You have to have that before you can.
As Rachel, under current DPI administrative rules, the DPI may allow high schools to start the school year earlier in September one if they enroll at least seventy-five percent of eleventh and twelfth grade students in international.
We don't have that.
We don't have that.
That's just the APIB.
Right.
But Resolution fifteen dash oh-three, alignment of public and private school calendars. Would that be the next one, Quinn?
Yep.
The next one down. That one wouldn't be just for APIB. It would be to align with private school calendars.
Because as it says here, that they advertise that they start earlier, so that gives them more time to prepare for AP tests.
Well, in that one, I, you know, that I don't have a problem with because when you take the AP test in May, you've got less time to prepare. If you start after September first and you're going to May, you don't have until the end of the normal academic calendar to prepare for the test. So starting a little bit earlier makes sense.
So unless we have any major concerns, you guys can take this to convention. And WSB lobbies on these on our behalf, if they pass. But at the convention, if you really have a major concern, just talk to.
Right, I was gonna say, if there's any particular one we don't want to support, then we need to.
And then Eileen would stand up there and, or Jonathan, if you end up going, would stand up there. Which does remind me, okay, I'll make sure I mention that.
So normally the board would, would vote to give the delegate the authority to vote on the board's behalf.
Thank you. So I would entertain a motion to give our delegate the authority to speak on our behalf.
Delegate or alternate.
Or alternate, thank you. So moved. It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you to you for all the extra time. You will put in on that. Next up, comments from the school board regarding agenda items for future consideration. And thank you, Kathy, for continuing to put them on the list. I want to point to the fly population studies coming up soon, correct? And we're gonna be putting that on as soon as we get it. We may even have to have an additional meeting, but I'll let you know. Hopefully not. I try to avoid those.
I do.
Yes.
I would like our district to ask its employees and residents how we can save money. Do they see, let's just take example, this here. I don't know what this costs to do, but if it was emailed to us, we wouldn't have to have a color copy made. And there is lots of paper. Can we, can we reduce that? Can we reduce the cost of energy of having all the lights on as opposed to some of the lights on? We are looking to spend millions of dollars in facility updates. How do we save dollars? Chris, how long ago was that, that Dr. Patrick had meetings on this subject? Do you remember? 'Cause I came to EES five years ago, six years, five or six years ago.
Five years, I think about, yeah.
And I really think it was a good idea.
Could we send this through the finance, the budget process is coming up. Could the Finance and Facility Committee take a shot at that? If having the discussion about that there first, and then if you need the full board to do anything, you could. 'Cause it should probably be part of the budget process. Would that work, Quinn? If not, we'll.
I don't know if it's a budget process. I think it's, it's an overall mindset of the district and of ways to, the people, the staff.
Is this an administrative thing then? Not a board thing?
Yes. Well, it's, well, I think, I think, I don't know. But it has to start with administration, because they're, they're the ones that would have to really encourage it. And we have to find out from staff and residents, where can we, where can we find these?
Okay, let me think, let me talk with Lowell and we'll figure that out, where that fits, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any other future agenda items? Seeing none, then we will move to comments, or excuse me, board member announcements? Anyone have announcements? I want to mention that the convention is coming up and given that we are going to referendum, if board members can get there, generally the exhibits are a great way to get free stuff. But in this case.
Kathy.
There are gonna be all kinds of new buildings that have gone up and you guys could get a chance to just look at some of those plans, talk to some of those vendors. It's a great way to tour several schools at one time, 'cause you can just walk up and down those little aisles.
And there's usually a session, or two.
There usually is, so feel free to look at that. I know the three of us are signed up, so if any of the rest of you, I know you, some of you can't take off daytime work. I understand that. But if you can, I just wanted to mention that's coming up. I also wanted to mention, too, that we have a congratulations to Tony. He's now a Dr. Brzezinski. Is that correct? He got his doctorate. So congratulations to Tony. I just heard that through the grapevine, so congratulations. All right, that's it. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thanks, everyone, for your good work tonight. It's not an easy decision. Seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. National.